Good afternoon, it's three oh two.
Good afternoon, it's three oh two and we'll call the meeting of the St. Louis County Council Revenue and Personnel Committee meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
Councilmember Days.
Here.
Councilmember Harder.
Here.
Mr. Chair will also know for the record that Councilmember Tracus is in attendance. And you have a quorum.
Thank you, Chair, and I don't see any other council members logged in remotely, do you?
No.
I do not either, okay. So the committee takes official notice of and admits into evidence all St. Louis County ordinances and resolutions. So this afternoon, we are going to talk about the Securus contract with the Department of Justice Services. And I think everyone here was told in advance exactly what we were going to discuss. I do want to remind the participants on the WebEx to mute unless they're being asked questions and responding to those questions. We will get to all of you at some point, and for the purpose of getting the meeting started, since not everyone recognizes those on the WebEx call, if we can start with the County Counselors' Office, if you can identify yourself.
Maggie Bergman for the County Counselors' Office.
Thank you, Maggie. And is that from Securus Technologies?
Good afternoon, Matt Anderson, Sales Vice President, Securus Technologies.
Now, Mr. Anderson, there was also an indication that Tom Hoffman was going to attend, is that accurate?
Tom Hoffman reports up to me, I actually oversaw all of the procurements, the five before the NASBO opportunities, so I was the one better versed to answer the questions today.
So Mr. Hoffman will not participate, is that right?
Yes, sir.
You will be the only one from Securus, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So you go ahead and go back on mute now, we will get to you here in just a short period of time.
Thank you, sir.
So what I want to do next is, I do want to forward, or first of all, discuss, I think everybody here in person received the Securus factual timeline, as it's called. We were prepared to email that to any council members that were on the WebEx, but since we have none, we will certainly make that available to them at some point here. Since they're not here, we will definitely make it available to them. So I just want to run through a very quick timeline. And a lot of this may be, for many of you, the first time you've heard some of this, it may be confusing, it is very complicated, there's no doubt about that. It goes back, I only went back to 2017 in developing this timeline, so I just wanted to read from this timeline some highlights of this, because all of you at some point will be asked to discuss some of this. So I'm just gonna buzz through it very quickly, and then we'll get to the questions. So we're gonna start with December twentieth, 2017, an RFP twenty seventeen dash seventy-six dash TP. Steve Stanger then was the county executive, he did not take any action on this RFP after the vendor was chosen. The RFP lapsed due to a lack of contract execution within the prescribed time. As such, the department rebid in February of 2019, and we'll get to that here in just a second. The video portion of this bid was optional at that point, could provide service or terminate service at will. The word "commission" was taken out and just reworded, so the actual commission was in there at that point, and you'll hear later of when that was taken out. So the rate of the calls went from twenty-five cents, and this was the calls that the inmates were making at DJS, from twenty-five cents to twenty-one cents. And then moving forward to page two, some of this I will skip over, let's go down to the bottom of page two, because there were other information, just supporting documents. Twenty eighteen, January twenty eighteen to May twenty eighteen, Winston Coward, who many of you know, works in the County Executive's Office and is currently on a staff, who by the way was invited today, and he declined to participate in this today. Mr. Coward is on the page for Missouri Ethics Commission Campaign Committee Reports for Communications. Mr. Coward at that time in twenty eighteen is employed by Coward Strategies LLC. If you go to page three, you can see the documentation from the MEC showing Mr. Coward's payments there under the MEC. And down at the bottom, you could see also his other work that he was doing according to his LinkedIn profile. Down to August thirteenth of twenty eighteen, Mr. Coward texts his then-girlfriend that he may have a lobbying client, Securus Technologies, which he describes as a Skype for prisoners, and clearly a video component to this contract was contemplated at this point. If you go to page four, you can actually see the text that he sent to his then-girlfriend. He indicates Securus will need help with the council. It's pretty well-known to all of us at that point that Sam Page was at odds with Steve Stanger at that point. You could see his text basically says he may have a lobbying client, jail-related Securus Technologies, it's a secure Skype for prisoners, Earl, which for those of you that do not know Earl Scissors, Earl is handling the Stanger administration, we'll talk more about Earl here shortly, but you could see that in the text, says he needs help on the council, and then it goes on with other personal conversation. Down to the bottom of page four, October twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen, Coward texts his then-girlfriend inviting her to dinner with Page, because he needs to talk to Page about a new lobbying engagement. The only entity Coward ever registered for with the Missouri Ethics Commission was Securus Technologies. So you could see on page five, the text where you could see that he's, Coward is talking to his then-girlfriend, "You want to meet up with me and Sam for dinner," or drinks rather, and/or dinner, "I need to talk with him, reference a new lobbying thing, but I told him you were coming along, was part of the package, you guys can finally meet, nothing formal." He wants to go to Crease, K-R-E-I-S, I assume that's a restaurant, I'm not sure, he says he'd like to meet you, and that's all that's of note there. Going to page six in the timeline, October twenty-ninth, twenty eighteen. Missouri Ethics Commission records indicate this is when Coward began lobbying for Securus Technologies under the name of Gateway Government Solutions. His only job was to lobby local government for Securus. The anomaly on the MEC registration shows Coward began lobbying for, lobbying on October twenty-ninth, three days after his dinner with Page, where he was supposed to discuss Securus. But his registration shows twelve eighteen of twenty eighteen is the day he began lobbying for Securus. So the only question there that we can't ask Mr. Coward if he's not, because he's not here, is that he failed to register for nearly two months late afterwards. Moving down to October thirtieth, twenty eighteen, it's announced in the Missouri Scout that Winston Coward has registered for Gateway Government Relations on behalf of Securus Technologies. Gateway has two principals, I mentioned one earlier, Earl Scissors, and a current St. Louis City Alderwoman, Sarah Martin. Gateway has been the lobbyist for Simmons Hanley Conroy, a plaintiffs law firm based in Alton, Illinois since 2015. And just remember, we'll call that law firm Simmons in the future, you'll hear much about Simmons as this moves forward. Moving to page seven, twenty nineteen, we're up to twenty nineteen, February first, twenty nineteen, Mr. Coward ends his lobbying engagement with Securus Technologies, care of Gateway Government Relations LLC, screenshot is above. Move to February, March, twenty nineteen, new RFP twenty nineteen zero four dash PR revised two thirteen of nineteen, twelve days after Coward terminated his lobby registration. According to the schedule, which you'll see on the next page, the RFP went out at least a couple of weeks before the site visits, so essentially right after Winston Coward finished lobbying on February first, twenty nineteen. The most important change made for the benefit of Securus was the video was put back in as mandatory, see page eight, number ten. Reduction down to twenty-one cents a call remained from the last bid. The next page is page eight, that's supporting documents, we will move past that, you can read that at your pleasure. So we're on page nine, let you catch up. Page nine, April fourth, twenty nineteen, the U.S. Attorney's Office subpoenas county government. Remember, this is still during the Stanger administration. One company listed at their request on the subpoena was Securus. April twenty-ninth, Steve Stanger has resigned, Sam Page becomes the county executive on April twenty-ninth, so just about three weeks after the attorneys, U.S. Attorney's Office subpoenas county government for records to include Securus. On May three, literally just a few days later, Winston Coward becomes the chief of staff for County Executive Page. And now, just a few weeks after that, Lieutenant Colonel Troy Doyle, who was then the interim director at Justice Services, transmits communications at Securus, won the bid for inmate telephone video visitation and law library contract and requests legislation. We're up to page ten, we're almost through this, May twenty-ninth, twenty nineteen, the Director of Procurement, Renee Medlin Schumacher, certifies that Justice Services RFP twenty nineteen zero four dash PR certified that the RFP process was followed. Few days later, County Executive Page requests legislation for Securus contract. This may be actually, I have to check on this still in the record, this may actually be the very first contract the County Executive sent to the council for passage as the county executive. June fourth, it's on the council agenda for introduction, agenda documents on request for legislative action are available, you can see that on that Google web link there. July second, twenty nineteen, the final passage agenda authorizing the county executive to contract with Securus, so we're up to July second of twenty nineteen. July sixteenth, twenty nineteen, so just a few weeks later, the council votes down the Securus contract. There's absolutely no mention at that meeting about any kind of involvement with Winston Coward at all. That conflict mentioned doesn't come up until after the press starts asking questions after the meeting. So we'll go to page eleven. Page eleven, we're up to July seventeenth, Channel Four, KMOV was present at the council meeting when the contract was voted down. Lauren Traeger reports that Lieutenant Colonel Doyle didn't have knowledge how Securus contract came to be. They report on a conflict allegation with Mr. Coward. Again, Mr. Coward was the lobbyist when the RFP was being developed. So now we move up to October eighteenth of twenty nineteen. Simmons, that's the law firm in Alton, donates five thousand dollars to the Page PAC. October twenty-first, Simmons donates five thousand dollars, another five thousand dollars to the Page PAC. On page twelve, you can see the documentation, the screenshot from the MEC. On October thirty-first, twenty nineteen, the new RFP finalized for inmate telephone service, video visitation, and law library. It will become RFP twenty nineteen dash fifty-four dash PR. On November eighteenth, twenty nineteen, that RFP was issued. We're now up to twenty twenty, February eleventh, twenty twenty, County Executive Page requests legislative action to contract with Securus, indicating it was a no-cost contract, the first of its kind in St. Louis County. On February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, down at the bottom, the council votes six to one to advance Securus contract to final vote for March third, twenty twenty meeting. Fitch, that's me, was the lone no vote because of the failure to disclose the conflict with Winston Coward. I voted no because it hadn't been disclosed. You could see the, on the next page, page thirteen, go down to February twenty-eighth, the Post Dispatch reports that Securus contract was canceled due to irregularities. Page had been blasting the incumbent provider ICS for complaining about process being unfair because the county was selected, because the county selected Securus because of free tablets, a feature not in the RFP. ICS also claimed its bid was lower and should have won the bid. ICS had been asked by county procurement officials to submit a bid with a setup fee. Later, Page praised Securus for no setup fee. ICS claims its bid is still lower than Securus'. Moving to March fourth, the Post Dispatch reports the council dropped Securus contract due to irregularities. Councilman Tracus believes ICS, who complained about the way contractors awarded, Securus could subject them to council ethics investigation. Moving up to March second, RFP twenty nineteen fifty-four PR was canceled. May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, Simmons, the law firm in Alton, Illinois, donates five thousand dollars to the Page PAC. June first, twenty twenty, Simmons donates five thousand dollars to the Page PAC. June third, twenty twenty, Simmons donates five thousand dollars to the Page PAC. Again, you flip over to page fourteen, you can see the documentation on the MEC report screenshot. October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, Doug Burris testifies at the Justice Health and Welfare Committee that they were starting the rebid process, and the YouTube link is attached there. Discussion starts at the twenty-eight minute mark. We're up to twenty twenty-one at this point. March fifth, twenty twenty-one, the county enters into a main contract with Securus through the state of Missouri NASBO master agreement. March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, the county enters into a tablet contract with J-Pay subsidiary of Securus. June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, the county amends the master agreement to reduce the number of kiosks for telephone service from two nineteen to two oh four. June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, Simmons donates five thousand dollars to PAC, P-A-C. Page fifteen, which is the final page, July eleventh, twenty twenty-one, Post Dispatch reports on Securus being selected after rejections. So that's kind of the timeline, and we'll talk about that and have a chance to talk to some of the participants in the timeline at this point. So what I'd like to do is bring up Jennifer Keating, if we could start with Ms. Keating first.
Mr. Chair, I would ask that all speakers just state your name and position for the record.
That's exactly what I was going to ask before you started.
Sure.
Please state your name and your current position with St. Louis County Government.
Yep, my name is Jennifer Keating, and I am the Acting Director of Administration.
Okay. Ms. Keating, I'll start, and then I'll turn it over to the other members to see what questions they may have of you. So you got to hear the timeline, was any of that a surprise to you, or was that any of that new information to you?
It was, yes.
Knowing what you heard, assuming it's true, all true, does it make any influence or difference on the actions that you've taken up to this point?
It does not.
Okay. So at some point, there was a decision made that we're gonna not go out for RFP on this Securus thing again, is that right?
That is correct.
Can you tell us how that occurred?
Sure. So Justice Service had approached us for the fifth RFP for these services, and in trying to pull that together, the buyer, who was responsible, we had one buyer who was responsible for all RFPs, we were short-staffed, and this was during the pandemic, mind you, and this was going to be the fifth time that we had solicited for the same service. And since the Chapter one oh seven, the procurement ordinances had changed in two thousand eighteen, we had started to use the cooperative purchasing process a lot more in our purchases. It really helped us through the pandemic. It, we find that it helps us with staffing issues, timing issues, and the fact that we can get really great prices because of economies of scale. So the buyer suggested to me, why don't we look to see if this contract, if this is offered through a cooperative? And I thought that that was a great idea. We've picked up doing a lot of those for all of our departments. And so she did the research and found that there was NASBO offered a inmate communications cooperative contract that we could make a purchase off of. In fact, the state of Missouri had already done an agreement with NASBO. It was solicited by the state of Nevada with seventeen different participating states. And so we chose to communicate with, I reached out to the state of Nevada, we talked about rates, you know, we opened up negotiations and went the cooperative route.
Okay. So I have an email in front of me, and I'll let you read it, but you may remember, it's from you to Tricia Rogers, who works at Justice Services, right?
Yes.
She handles their, she's their compliance supervisor, does that sound right?
I don't know her exact title, but yeah.
That's what it says in her signature.
Okay, great.
So it says, "This is from you to her on January eighth, twenty twenty-one. Tricia, I have received tentative approval to process this purchase through a cooperative contract." Is that what you were just talking about?
Yes.
So tell me who gave you the tentative approval to process this purchase?
It was my communication with the state of Nevada and through NASBO to determine whether we could make that purchase off of that contract, and whether we would be able to negotiate the rates and fees. So these types of contracts have kind of a standard base fee or in rates, and then those are adjustable based on what type of contract you're looking for. So you'll note that in our, in our previous three RFPs, we had actually solicited this contract as a revenue generating contract. We were making upwards of two million dollars, I think, one or two million, don't quote me on that, on phone charges to the inmates, yes, so the county itself. So that cancellation of that third RFP was actually due to the fact that council had made the decision that we were no longer going to charge exorbitant fees to our inmates, and we were no longer going to earn revenue based on their, you know, need for communication. So that third RFP was canceled, and then when we reissued the fourth one, it was, it was different. It was, it was, we don't want to earn revenue, give us your lowest rate possible, and we'll not be adding anything to it. And I do believe I came to you all, I think all three, four of you were there at the time, and talked about how we had modified that RFP to better serve our inmates. And, and so we needed to know whether we could do that with this contract and be able to do that. If not, this contract was not going to meet our needs, so that's what I was doing.
Okay, so at this time, January eighth, twenty twenty-one, who are you reporting to? Who was your direct supervisor?
Twenty twenty-one?
January, so it had been earlier this year, January, January eighth?
Yep, Todd Martin.
So did you ever have a conversation with Todd Martin or anybody else in the county administration that you were going to realistically go around the council with an RFP process and go to a state type of cooperative purchase? Did you have that conversation with anybody?
I mentioned it to him that I was going to do it, just because I, we were struggling with trying to get solicitations out, and I felt that this would be a cost-saving method for us, both cost and time-saving method. So I did mention it to him.
And, and did you get any instructions from him to go for it, or was there any specific, what did he tell you?
No, he gave, he gave me no instruction on procurement. He was very adamant about staying out of all procurement processes.
So nobody came to you, you did this all on your own to go out to a cooperative agreement?
That's correct.
So how many other companies that do this work were on that state cooperative agreement option?
So NASBO awarded contracts to, I believe, five different vendors. And, and so there were five, I don't think the state did a contract with all five, I think maybe just four, I think, probably no one here who can help me. I have notes, so I can look it up, but yeah.
Do you know the names of the other companies that were eligible, that you could have selected them?
Not offhand, I don't.
Why did you select Securus?
So we selected Securus because out of four RFPs, Securus had been recommended three of the four. And we were very comfortable with their offerings, their pricing, and the, the service that they could provide. And I don't want to say we, I'm gonna say the evaluation committee was, found value in that Securus contract, and so made that choice.
Okay, thank you. So now that you've made this decision to go off of the NASBO cooperative, and you've decided that it's gonna be Securus and not any of the others, what do you do with that information? What do you have to do next?
So that's the buyer, and then the department will work with the vendor to negotiate a contract. RFPs are a little bit different than bids. In the bidding world, you know, price is the ultimate deciding factor, and procurement actually executes those contracts. Well, RFPs are a little bit different, and so are cooperatives. And so with the cooperative, we reach out to them, we negotiate price, and we actually, the department did that on their side because they have that expertise, whereas as, you know, in procurement, that's not really our area. So they would negotiate that, and then we would work with the department, procurement would work with the department to make sure that we get all the forms that are necessary to do business with St. Louis County.
Okay. Just a moment, please. So at some point, you have to have a conversation with the Director of Justice Services, Mr. Burris, about Securus being selected, is that right?
I, I did reach out to him, and it wasn't really, like we, well, yes. So I talked with Tricia, and then we, if I remember correctly, she might have reached out to Doug, or I did, and we just chatted about this procurement option, this procurement method.
Did you write in an email that it's up to the department director to make these choices, the choice?
The choice of the vendor, yes, it is.
So now I'm confused. So just a second ago, you said you chose Securus. So was it you chose Securus?
No, I did not choose Securus. I recommended a procurement method to procure Securus.
Who chose Securus?
So I think, I, I think it was decided through a group discussion, and I've asked myself that question a couple of times, and I'm trying to remember how we came out that. I think that, that I think that that Securus, we knew Securus based on the RFPs and the proposals, that they could meet our needs. And being that they had been recommended three times out of the four, we felt comfortable with that, and so we made that decision. But actually, when a cooperative purchase is initiated, it's initiated through a requisition in the system, and it's the department who ultimately has the choice of the vendor, not procurement.
So did you have a conversation with Mr. Burris? And, you know, I'm not going to put words in your mouth, but is it true that you had a conversation with Mr. Burris, and he told you he wanted Securus?
I think we talked about it as being a viable contract for the county, and I offered that procurement method as a way to obtain it, that service. And so, like I said, there were a lot of conversations when we were talking about the method, and.
This is probably the most important part of this conversation.
I know it is, and I've been thinking about this since I was invited to this, and maybe they'll have a better memory of it. I mean, we, you know, when we talked about achieving these services so that we could get the price reduced and get new updated equipment in the jail, you know, I offered the the fact that you, that we could use Securus through a cooperative. And so maybe it, you know, it might have been me. I don't know.
So I guess your final answer is you don't really know who told Mr. Burris it was going to be Securus. It might have been you?
Through discussions, yes. We did not talk about any other vendors, so I can tell you that.
So when you talked to Mr. Burris, you only mentioned Securus as being an option?
Yes, because it was the one that in the last two RFPs that I was involved in were the chosen vendors. And so in order to achieve that again, rather than to go through another RFP process, it takes 17 weeks, while we're paying exorbitant fees, our inmates are paying exorbitant fees, we could circumvent that by using a cooperative.
Okay, and I get all that. I understand that. Very familiar with that process with buying cars and all the different things through county government.
Yep.
Who was on this committee that you said you had this discussion with?
So I I worked with Tricia, and she.
Tricia Rogers?
Tricia Rogers, yep, and she has a committee of staff who evaluated the RFP proposals.
So nobody else, other Justice Service personnel, is that is that's on the committee?
And 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 a buyer from procurement is always on a committee to ensure that the process is is handled according to procurement policies.
And who would be the buyer from procurement?
The buyer at that time was Patty Reuter.
Patty?
Reuter.
Reuter?
Reuter, R-E-U-T-E-R.
R-U-T-E-R, two Ts?
One.
Okay. Is she still with county government?
She's not.
And what was her, she was a Merit System employee?
She was.
And how long has she been gone?
I'm trying to, it was probably April of this year.
Okay.
Or June, I apologize, June.
Okay, so she's been gone since June?
June, yep.
Okay. And going back to Securus, you talked about the video component. So and the commission that was dropped. Remember when we dropped the commission? The council said, "We don't want to make money off of prisoners and their families."
Right.
Remember that? So when that happened, did Securus's bid go down since they no longer had a share of their revenue with St. Louis County? Or did they, did it stay the same?
Their their rates went down.
They did go down.
So, yeah, so I'd have to look at exactly how they went down. I mean, when they quote them, they quote a rate that includes our share. So and and Doug might be able to speak more about that, because I didn't really look at the prices, you know, and do the math that way. What we were looking at was the total cost to the inmate. And so those, I don't know what the third proposal was as compared to the fourth.
What I'm wondering is, is when we dropped the commission portion.
Yeah.
Did the revenue that Securus was going to make from the families and the inmates decline equally? Or were they able to pocket more profit because we declined to collect a commission? Do you know the answer?
I don't know the answer.
Who would know the answer to that?
I possibly Doug, or else we just need to go and look it up and get back to you.
I can't speak for the rest of the council, but when I supported dropping the commission, I assumed that that money would go to a savings for the families and the inmates, not into the pockets of Securus or whoever we selected.
No, it definitely is a large savings to them because we no longer make that commission. So if if a rate was 21 cents and now it's .04 cents, that whole piece is savings to the inmates.
So Securus, when we come to them, should be able to answer this, if they pocketed that profit or if they completely transferred that additional that used to be commissioned to the families and of the inmates? They should be able to answer that?
Well, we can see that in the rates that they propose.
But you don't know what those are. And does anybody here have those to tell us what the differences are? Okay, I see.
Do you have them? I have I have the two, I have the two RFP proposals that I could look up, but if you know offhand, then it might be easier. Tricia, ask.
Is this Tricia? Tricia, if you can introduce yourself?
Tricia Rogers, I'm the Corrections Compliance Supervisor for the jail.
All right.
So the rates went down the last proposal to 4.9 cents a minute.
I couldn't hear you for.
4.9 cents a minute with zero funding fees.
So what does that turn out into revenue compared to what the county used to collect for commissions?
Well, they used to charge, they were, the rate before was 21 cents a minute. And then we were going to get 73% commission off of that. Then they went down to 4.9 cents.
So I won't do the math. Did it go down 73%? You see, you understand my question? What I'm trying to get at is, I'm trying to understand, did they pocket the profit? Or did they basically reduce the rate so much that saved these families that same amount of money that we would have earned in a commission? Does that make sense?
The other thing was the funding fee. They got rid of all the funding fees. The funding fees were between 3.95 and 5.95 per deposit. So they got rid of those. There were zero funding fees.
Okay. Did Securus lose, did Securus lose a bid, one of the RFPs, because it, video was not part of it, of the RFP?
No, they did not. We just liked another company better.
Okay. All right, I think that's all I have from you. Ms. Rogers, others may have questions. Jennifer, if you wouldn't mind coming back? Okay, so I think we agreed on, we're not really sure how Securus was pulled out of the pack with the others that were also qualified other than they had been previously involved in the process, and people were happy with them in the RFP process. Did I say that right?
Yeah, they scored the highest. So we have scoring matrices, and so out of three out of the four, they scored the highest. And these were, you know, made up of evaluation committees or made up of merit employees that existed in Justice Services.
And I will ask one last question, then turn it over to the other committee members. Did anyone else in county government influence you to go to Justice Services and, say, pick Securus?
No.
So you got no feedback from anybody above you or anybody you report to or anybody in the administration?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Other members? Councilwoman, please.
Yes. I'm going to have to pull on a strain here from long ago, and I believe I was just on the council at that particular time, you were in procurement. And I recall the two people, and I guess it was ICS at the time, and Securus. And when the the bid was, or RFP was solicited, there were two different things that were solicited. One had the video and the other did not. And I do recall at that time, that I believe it was whoever, ICS, whoever the other one was, said they they would file a lawsuit because they were not given the same information as Securus. And if I'm not mistaken, that's kind of how we started, is the reason that the council did away with that altogether. Are you familiar with that at all?
So I'm familiar with bits and pieces of that, and I'm not sure that my recollection is exactly the same as yours. Who, the the video, the, I assume, I assume we're talking about the tablets when we, okay, all right, great. So the tablets, when we when we solicited the last RFP, were not included. But our RFPs always offer proposers the opportunity to submit, you know, other types of services that we may be interested in. So an RFP process allows us to reach out for some scope of service and add to it if there are components that we would like to add, that we see as a benefit. This works very well for for purchases where we don't know what the solution is going to be. We just know we have a need. You propose a solution. So in this case, Securus proposed tablets as an alternative. Now, it is very important in the procurement process that when you evaluate a proposal, you don't evaluate on those alternatives. They cannot be used to determine whether you were going to choose one vendor over another, because that's not what you asked for. So what happened was, we did end up doing a contract for tablets, and we're interested in tablets, but it was not a requirement in our proposal. And IC Solutions, if I remember correctly, also submitted tablets as one of their optional proposals, alternatives that they that they could provide us. So I, so in that aspect, they both submitted the same thing. Now, when it comes to the reason why we canceled that final RFP, this is, and I I said it before, and I'm going to say it again, and I've said it to the county executive, that process was the fault of my division in procurement. We made an error. It is, and and the information I gave the county executive when he started talking about Securus and his and the proposed contract that was sent to counsel was spot on from what I knew. And I had no faults with the things that he was saying until I learned a little bit more about some emails. We did what we we don't do a lot of in procurement, which was ask for a best and final offer. And the buyer made an error. And in her error, she asked for a best and final offer from several vendors, several proposers, and what she asked was not exactly the same proposal from vendor to vendor. I would say it, there's no requirement that they have to be the same. You could be interested in one type of service or one proposal. So if if we were seeking a solution, that we didn't know what that solution would be, we could ask for clarification and best and final offer from one vendor to another, and they can be different because the solutions are different. But in this case, the solutions were the same, okay? So there there wasn't any really big difference in the services being provided by IC Solutions and Securus. So in my mind, the buyer should have asked for a best and final offer on identical proposals, identical plans. And that way, we could fully compare apples to apples and not apples to oranges.
So is that the reason that ICS was threatening litigation?
It is. And so the thing is, is that I don't think, and I'm not an attorney, so I can't speak to that. I mean, there is no rulebook that says when we ask for best and final offer that our best and final proposals all have to be the same, because often they can't be. So but in my mind, it clouded it, and it didn't make it look transparent and above board, and that bothered me to no end. And as soon as I learned and defined that information, you know, my buyer was telling me, she she got, she she was telling me some information, but I asked IT to pull all emails so that I could see them and compare them. And when I saw that, I immediately went to county executive, and I told him that we, I felt that it was not in our best interest to continue on with this RFP, because it would always be suspect.
Well, in my mind, if you're looking for a product and you're asking for bids, why would you bid one with apples and one with oranges? I'm not clear as to how that, how that happens if you have one company, and they said, "Well, we can provide video or tablets or whatever, and that would not be afforded the other company as well." I I'm not, I'm not clear on that at all, because because I think that's that's an uneven playing field, in my mind.
So the best and final offer never included tablets, because tablets are not what we evaluated the proposals on. So and and as you mentioned, you're right, the buyer should have asked for apples to apples in this case because the services being offered were identical. I mean, they're not always offered identical. Take a completely different RFP, and when we've asked for best and final offer, we may be asking for it on different, different types of proposals, but in this case, you're right.
So do you think that that gave Securus a little, a little step up in terms of receiving the contract? Because you indicated that they, three out of four of the times that you went out, they were the top vendor. They were the top bidder or whatever you call it.
Right.
Is that correct? So do you think, given that kind of background and that uneven application, if you will, gave them a leg up on on this whole process?
I don't think so, because I think that what we ended up looking for wasn't necessarily only about price. And that's what's different about RFPs, is it's not always about price. And so if you actually end up looking at the evaluations, I believe that IC Solutions was the third pick, third ranked proposer. And so Securus was chosen, and and I think that that decision, while a best and final offer affects price, there's a lot more to an evaluation of a proposal than just price, you know? And so I think it's important to look at those other things as well.
Again, I'm going on memory, but if if that serves me correctly, when they went head to head, I think ICS was, their their per-minute charge was less than Securus, if I recall correctly. And I could not understand how you would continue to say that they are the best, this best value for the money, even with the tablets or without the tablets. Their their price was still, per minute, was higher at that particular point. Let me go to the other, on this contract with the state. You indicated that there were five vendors that were doing the exact same thing as Securus. Is that correct?
Five vendors that were awarded contracts through NASBO, yes.
They were on the list and could have been chosen for this.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay, and so because you indicated, again, because they were recommended three out of the four times on a previous RFP, that that gave them a leg up. So you see where I'm going with the, I think, the uneven playing field here because of that?
Well, I think we we don't know a lot about the other vendors that were out there, and so.
So how did you find out more about Securus than you did the other vendors? If you're looking at, across the board, at five vendors that you could potentially could get this business, why would you not look at all of them to figure out if indeed this was the best value for for our residents?
Well, we had done solicitations already, and so we knew that Securus was the best value and the best choice for the department. They've already made that decision three times out of four. And so in that way, and which is what we do for all departments, if there's been a cooperative solicitation that's been competitive and and proven to be fair and reasonable value, which these NASBO contracts are, and they follow our our procurement guidelines, then departments can go and purchase off of them without doing more solicitation and more competitive process between them. Does that make sense? So when we wanted to buy the equipment in this room, IT went and said, "Okay, this vendor can provide this to me. They're on this cooperative. They can meet my timeline and my budget. I'm going with them." I didn't, I don't require them at this point to go out and compete against any other vendor, because they did that when they were awarded the cooperative contract.
But there could have been some others who perhaps you, maybe you didn't know about, that could have done that had you, I guess, cast a wider net on that. But let me go, you you mentioned something about after you decided on Securus, then you negotiated the price? I heard you say you negotiated the price again?
So, yeah, so, I mean, there is opportunity to negotiate price with cooperatives. Often, they have, you know, a baseline price. In this case, we didn't want any fees, and we we didn't want to pass any fees on to our inmates. So that is in their Securus's proposal, and and a bid award or proposal award, you know, they have options with rates. Well, we needed to negotiate with them because we didn't want rates. So there is a negotiation process that can occur before a contract is executed.
Was this the only vendor that did not have the rates at zero?
No, others did as well. We would have, we would, it's in the county's best interest to negotiate anything that we can. We can't negotiate bids and invitation for bids. That is a low-bid process. But RFPs, cooperatives, we have the ability to negotiate.
So within the five that you had there, I'm just trying to get clear on how this works. So within the five there, you did have the opportunity to negotiate among those five? And Securus still came out?
We did not.
You did not? Okay, let me, let me ask the question again. Okay, of the five that you had that were eligible to do this kind of work, there were five vendors. You with me?
Yes.
Okay, and so of those five, you did not negotiate anything else with the other vendors?
No.
I'm trying to make sure I understand. So, you only negotiated with Securus?
Correct.
And that was because?
Because we had done an RFP and their proposal met all of our needs. And they were able to meet the prices and be, to provide us with the rates and the items that were in the proposal that we had chosen.
Is there ever an opportunity that you would, that the state contract may not be the best?
I don't know. You know, they go through a competitive process, and just like we would do a competitive process. So, I would, you're in, with NASBO, you're able to look at their proposals, you're able to look at their evaluations, are able to look at scoring. So, we're able to see that that competitive process that aligns with our procurement code was followed. And so, it would be the same thing that we would do here, just on a wider net.
Okay, and there's nothing else, nothing else in this, in this bid from Securus, there's nothing else that weighed in on to whether you selected them or not? That was it?
The past RFPs, I imagine, helped to influence the decision, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Counselor Harder. Yes, thank you, Ms. Keating. A couple of things. You passed over this pretty quickly on the timeline. Have you gotten an opportunity to see this timeline?
I have not.
Okay, so you don't have an opinion on whether this timeline is accurate or not?
I can only speak to the parts that I was involved in. A lot of that I was not involved in, I didn't, not aware of it.
Okay. In this whole time dealing with Securus, who was your direct report to? Who did you directly report to?
During the 2021, it was Todd Martin.
Okay, and who does, or who did he report to?
He reports to the county executive.
Okay, so...
And to Deanna.
Okay, through Deanna or...
Through Deanna, yes.
Okay, so he reports to Deanna, and Deanna reports to...
At the time, yeah, right, yes.
So, on any time you were talking about these issues, did you talk up that chain, or did the chain talk down to you on any of this?
No. I informed Todd so that he was aware that we were going to do this. And that was the only time we talked about it.
Okay, was there any check-in with him on input or his input on any of this? Did he normally stay out of these things?
Very much so.
Was that his policy or not?
It's policy, it's also best practice. I've been a strong advocate for any type of appointee, any non-merit position, not to be involved in procurement. I can't completely say non-merit, because our police are non-merit in board elections, but any appointees in, in public purchasing, it's really best practice that they're not involved.
So, is that a county practice, best practice, your practice?
I would say best, I would say maybe all three.
All three? So, so you don't recall any influence, outside influence coming to you saying, you know, "You need to bid it this way or bid it that way"?
No, not at all.
Okay. On this committee that decided that Securus was the proper vendor for this, how many are on that committee and who were they?
So, I think you should, maybe we can defer that question to Tricia or Doug on that, because I was not involved in the committee.
Okay, were there five, six, how many people?
It depends on which, which RFP you're speaking about. I think it changed, and that's just in my review of the certification documents.
So, with all these different adorations of this RFP, would that committee have changed, or would have been the same committee throughout that?
No, I think it changed some. I think some players have been, I think Tricia's been involved this whole entire time. So, there may be a few that were there, but others have changed.
And that committee, just so I understand, that committee is the committee that would score any contract, Securus or otherwise, correctly?
For that RFP. The committee changes. It has to be made up of subject matter experts. So, that committee will change depending on what you are soliciting.
Okay, and the reputation of this state co-op? Have you had experience with the people or the groups or the companies that they pick? And what's the reputation of that co-op?
Of the NASBO co-op is actually a national association of state procurement officials. So, it is very large, it's made up of all the states. It has very large buying power. And it's able to cast, as I mentioned, a wide net to get a lot of proposals and bids. In that way, we take advantage of economies of scale. Multiple states have, you know, executed agreements with this one in general. I mean, they have a lot of contracts. So, it is a well-known cooperative and used throughout state and local governments.
So, is it a national database? Is it Missouri database?
It's national.
So, it's a national database?
Correct.
And you said there was five vendors on that list?
Yes.
Are there still five vendors on that list?
There are.
Okay, and of those five, do you remember the names of those companies that are on that list?
I, I don't, I'm sorry.
Do you remember any of them?
Um, no, nope.
Okay.
I can look and get back to you, though, and let you know who they are.
Okay, so, these five, you said you went with Securus because you said you had a, I guess, a relationship from past...
So, not a relationship, but after you've, I'm, and I don't want to speak for Tricia, it's really not my place. But, I mean, after you've done this four times and you've seen the proposals, and, I mean, it's very clear that Justice Services knew what they were looking for in a contract. I mean, you know, other than the change in cost, not much has changed throughout this process. And so, I felt confident in saying, if they meet your needs through three RFPs, then I think you would execute a contract with them.
Would you say, the way they bid these jobs, any of these people in this, in this co-op, that any bid would be very unique to the, to the buyer? And unique to St. Louis County? And how, if that's true, how could they be in just a kind of a, a scale type of bid when that scale may be based on assumptions that don't apply to St. Louis County?
I would say that the services called for in the RFP done by NASBO were explicit. So, all of these proposals are going to be submitting the same, technically, the same responses. It's not like this is, there's going to be variation of services. It's going to be, these are your services and these are your rates. And so, the rates then, the way they do it is, you know, based on maybe population or number of calls, and is going to be a base rate. And, and then there'll be rates for different other services that are then offered. So, there's a lot of variation. So, if you have a, maybe a small call, you know, volume, you're going to have this rate. A larger call volume is going to have this. So, it's able to meet the needs of multiple-sized governments.
Okay, so is it based on call size or size of the jail, size, number of inmates? How do they decide what's good, better, best?
I'd have to go look at how, I haven't looked at it in months. So, I would have to go and look and see how it's done, but I think it's call volume.
Call volume?
Yeah.
Now, the business model that you quoted us before, that where the governmental entity shares in the profit of those phone calls, is that the standard business model out there across the country?
So, it was. We've seen a huge overhaul, I would say, nationwide. And it's, that's, you know, Doug might be able to speak more to that. But from what I'm reading and the little bit of, of research that I've done on the subject, is that, and just in the news in general, the, you know, we're recognizing that we're, you know, keeping people in jail and all we're doing is, is, it's making them more broke than they may already be. So, I think that that, it did not seem to be a surprise when we negotiated for, you know, a zero revenue, you know, stream for the county.
So, since that was a major change in the way the RFP was proposed, initially, you set out that way of a revenue-sharing type of model, correct?
Correct.
And then, when this council or others decided to change that model and say, "No, we don't need to tack on these extra fees", which sounds like, what, 75% more than the call is worth, that then you would normally go back out to bid and say, "Give us your, your price for just the call", not for the revenue sharing.
Right, so that's what we did on the fourth RFP. That was why that one was different and why we canceled the third one, is because we went out and said, "You scratched what we've looked before. We want these services, but there should be no revenue generating for the county."
What do you think is Securus' market share in this line of business?
I have no idea.
Okay, would you say they're the top provider across the country?
Mr. Chair, she's already said she has no idea. I don't want speculation.
Okay. Who determines the needs of, of these contracts?
What do you mean by needs?
The needs of whether you go out for an RFP or you don't, or who determines?
So, the department determines whether they have a need. And then procurement assists them in determining the procurement, the best procurement method. And we do have rules, policies, and we closely, very closely follow Chapter 107, which guides us through that.
Was there much difference in your, in the co-op? When you look at the not, not-profit-sharing model, was there much difference between one vendor to the other when it came to their base rate for phone calls?
I, I don't know. I think, I, I can't speak to that.
Okay, and lastly, to tie into what Ms. Daze said about the, about the iPad units. You said that everybody offers extras over and above the base RFP, is it? Am I hearing it right?
Yeah.
And would that be an extra normally with all the vendors to go with the iPad? Or do some make it included and others make it optional?
No, we were very clear that in the solicitation, we would only be evaluating on certain things, and that tablet was not included. So, it was clear to them that, you know, anything that they wanted to offer, and there's a lot, and I'm only speaking of tablets, but they offer other things, you know, other services. They can put those in as kind of other services. We actually have a section in our RFP proposal that we'll look at and we may be interested in, and, but it won't play a role in the evaluation.
So, there is a section in your RFP for all the vendors to say, "Hey, this is what we want, but if you've got extra things, you put it over here"?
Let us know, yeah.
And, and do people?
They do.
Put things in there?
Uh huh, we learn a lot that way, especially if it's a, not, not in this one so much, but especially if it's an RFP where we, we don't know what's out there and what can be offered.
And is the iPad function, is that a common thing for many of the vendors?
I think, I don't know if all of them submitted it, but I do remember seeing a lot, a lot of them submitting it, yes.
So, that is maybe the trend going forward?
I, I think so, yeah. Especially with COVID now, I imagine it's going to grow even more.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Chair. Ms. Keating, if I heard you correctly, the only individual higher up the chain of command from you that you spoke to about this was Mr. Martin, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, and if I heard you correctly, in essence, Mr. Martin's response was that he didn't want to hear anything about it?
He didn't say that, I just told him. I mean, as my, as my direct report, I kept him informed of the things that I would, that I do, not everything. But I knew that this, this, I kind of forecasted that I would be standing right here five to six months later. And so, I felt that it was important just to let him know that this was a decision that we were making and, and it was going to be probably different than what everyone was expecting.
Is that one conversation or more than one?
I think it was just one. I do remember, the only other time I spoke to anyone was I did speak to Mike and Doug when it was...
I'm here to get to them in a moment, I'm talking about Mr. Martin right now.
Sure.
Okay, so you had one conversation with Mr. Martin?
I think so.
Did Mr. Martin instruct you in any way as to how to steer the procurement? Now, you had a conversation with Mr. Burris about it?
Yes.
More than one?
Yes.
Okay, and as you stand here today, do you have personal knowledge of anyone Mr. Burris spoke with regarding this contract?
I do not.
He never shared that with you? So, as far as you know, he could have, with respect to the NASBO procurement, made that decision unilaterally, isn't that right?
I hesitate to say that, because I feel like conversations between Patty, the buyer, Tricia, and myself kind of got us to Securus.
I understand, I'm talking about the decision to award the contract to Securus. Well, isn't it true that Mr. Burris possessed the discretion to make that decision unilaterally?
Yeah, the, the final result is at the department level, yes.
And so, as you stand here today, as far as you know, that's exactly what he did, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and as you stand here today, you have no knowledge that he spoke to anyone in the administration prior to making that decision? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, now, with respect to your buyer, who is that?
Patty Reuter.
Okay, Ms. Reuter sitting right here?
No, Ms. Reuter is retired.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, okay, she's retired. Now, if I understood you correctly, it's your position that Ms. Reuter aired in how she communicated this best and final offer to the various vendors, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the error was in not essentially conveying the same set of criteria to each vendor? Other than that, though, the vendors had identical information with respect to what was being asked for and what to respond to? Is that a fair statement?
Are you saying, did they reply to the scope completely? Yes, they both, all did.
And the scope was identical with each vendor?
Correct.
Okay, now, with respect to these extras that you were asked about, right? Categories that you don't include or items that you don't include in your prospectus. That's not unusual for a proposed vendor to include extras in their response, is it?
No.
And in this case, one of the items, Securus and perhaps other vendors, included as an extra item were these tablets, is that right?
Yes.
Isn't it true, ma'am, that ICS had the ability to include that as an extra, just like all the other vendors who did that?
And I believe they did.
Okay, thank you. I'm not quite finished yet. To your knowledge, ICS never filed a lawsuit, did it?
Not that I know of, no.
Did I understand you correctly to say that the reason that it was beneficial to go with the NASBO type of contract was that you could finalize the deal quicker than if you had to go out to RFP again?
That's one of the reasons, yes.
Another reason was that you could, in that, in doing that, save detainees and their families considerable amounts of fees by securing a contract sooner than waiting on a bid process?
That's correct.
Other than Todd Martin, you never spoke to anyone in the administration, did you, about this matter? Just bear with me in one moment. I think that's all I have, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Keating, just a couple of follow-ups based on the other questions. Were you aware at any point during this process that Winston Calvert had been a lobbyist for Securus?
I did hear that, yes.
At what point? Do you remember what point you heard that?
No, I don't. I thought, I, I do remember thinking at the time that he was no longer a lobbyist for Securus, but that he had been in the past. But I don't remember when I, when that was, when I learned of that.
Do you know if, when you heard about this, do you know if all the decisions had been made to go with Securus at that point? Or was it before you said, "We're going with Securus"?
I might have known about it beforehand. I can't, I'm not 100% positive when I found out.
Would that give you any pause going through this process, knowing that someone at that high of a level in the county administration had been a lobbyist for this company?
I don't think so, because there was no influence. I think that, I feel very confident that the decision to execute this contract was made... that the decision to execute this contract was made with no influence by anyone other than an eval committee and, and procurement.
Okay. And if you had gone to Director Burris and said, hey, we're going with Securus, and Director Burris said, I don't want to go with Securus, what would that have meant to you? And what would you have done differently?
I would have asked him, you know, if he would be interested in using a cooperative and looking at a cooperative or if he wanted to do an RFP. In fact, I do believe I had mentioned to Tricia in one of my emails that if we couldn't get the price of Securus negotiated down to be equivalent to what our RFP was, then we would, then we would not go with Securus and we would do another solicitation.
Okay.
So I, I, we had to meet what that proposal had been when, when the eval committee. I mean, that's not a requirement, but I felt like that, that at least we should be able to get that. If we can't, then, then we would do a solicitation.
Okay. And my last question, unless someone else has other questions, is, did you talk to any of your superiors, anybody in the administration, about you coming to testify here today?
I did.
Like who?
Yep. So I talked with Deanna so that she was aware that we were coming. Yep.
Just Deanna?
Yeah.
Nobody else in the administration at all? Okay. And did she give you any guidance?
We talked a little bit about, just, you know, we rehashed kind of what had happened. Doug and I were there together and-
Today?
No, yesterday. And so we just kind of recalled, you know, how, how the events happened, you know, the choices that we made and, and that's pretty much it.
So you and Doug sat down with Deanna Vinker, who worked for the county executive yesterday and talked about today? Okay. All right. Any other questions? Sorry, anyone from the committee? Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Daze.
Thank you. I want to go back to the initial about the RFP when you started that. So normally, when you do that in procurement, you, I guess you go into the background of the company. You're looking at the company to see what kinds of issues they may or may not have had. Were you able to do that with the Securus?
So we require a multitude of items when we do an RFP, including a bunch of documentation. We look at references and we, and we evaluate based on their responsiveness and if there are any issues that we've had with them. So that plays a role if, in, in cases where a vendor proposer may have already done business with us and we're not satisfied with their services. In an RFP, you know, we can, we can look at ourselves as being a, a reference, if you will, and, and score based on that. We haven't used Securus, so that wasn't a possibility. But we do ask for references in other places where they have services that are similar to ours. And then it's the responsibility of the department to reach out and, and, and check those references.
So did the department do that?
They did in order to, to process the RFPs and get them certified. Yes.
And did the department find any lawsuits, any judgments, anything of the quality of the, of the phone service, anything like that, that would give you a reason perhaps not to go with Securus?
I am not, I don't see that information that would, that would play a part in their evaluation. And I did not read any minutes that talked about that.
Who would that person be then that would be looking into that? Because I, I thought that as procurement, that would, is not, not what you do.
So RFPs are different. The way that the Chapter 107 is written, that work and that responsibility is put on the individual departments.
So then it would be Justice Services that would have to look into the background of this particular company?
That's correct.
Did they, do you know that they did that?
In order to score, I think they have to. So I, I, I want to say yes.
And so you, I guess we have to ask the, the people from Justice Services that, but from your perspective, you did not see anything that would give you pause, perhaps not to hire this company?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry. I think Councilwoman Drake, this is next.
All right. Thank you. I forgot to ask you this one part and I just want to follow up with it. It has to do with the scoring matrix?
Yep.
Can you, at least as simply as possible, because we obviously don't do what you do, but can you just summarize for us the, the different criteria or items that are factored into the matrix that you consider?
Yeah. So in the, in the most, I think this is the most recent RFP, we looked at their method of performance that gets a score of, I think that's 35% on my glasses. So in that, we look at, you know, equipment, repairs, installation, reporting, support staff, and overall proposed method of providing service. Then we look at their experience and viability, which was a 30% score where we look at their references, their project and industry experience, quality of their proposals, and MWBE certification. And then we look at price, the, the cost and the commission for this one at, at 35%. And then those are some-
Thank you for that summary. And then, did I hear you correctly that in each instance, Securus scored the highest with respect to that matrix?
They would have to be in order to be the proposed contractor.
So that's a correct statement?
That is.
Okay. And then lastly, I'm just going to cut to the chase here. Did you personally ever have a conversation directly with Winston Calvert with respect to Securus or this RFP?
Never.
Okay. To your knowledge, did Mr. Calvert ever communicate to anyone in the procurement office or on the committee you referenced with respect to this contract?
Not that I know of.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Just to, yes, thank you. Just to follow up. Has it been your recollection that Securus, and, and maybe I need to be educated on this, but I thought at the time, Securus had a reputation that if they ever got outbid in another type of bid, that they basically would buy the competition that outbid them and bring it under their fold? Is, is that been the kind of the, the game plan?
I have no idea what their business plan is.
Okay. And before Securus, who were we doing business with?
So we had IC Solutions.
Okay. And is IC Solutions still a standalone company or were they bought by anybody?
I don't know.
Okay. And we had IC Solutions for how long?
I believe their contract was awarded in 2007.
Okay. And, and they, it was terminated when?
They had a number of extensions during COVID so that we could maintain service because their contract had expired prior to that. And so I, and I believe we've done some extensions during all these RFPs. I, Tricia might know better, but I'm assuming that we had to extend all of them each time an RFP failed. So they've been just, I, I would say it's in their best interest that RFPs fail, right? And we can't execute a contract because we just continue services. We even asked them to lower their costs during COVID. They did a tiny bit, but they wouldn't even reduce the fees to match their proposal from the last RFP. So I think, but I'll let Doug and Tricia talk a little bit more about their services and, 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 you know, how, how that goes.
So when we signed up for ICS, was that a five-year contract, three-year?
Oh, I don't know. I'm, uh, do you? I'd, I'd have to go back and look. It's a 2007 contract. I, I don't know anything about it. It's before my time.
Okay. And is that a standard procedure that if you don't have a vendor in place to take over for another vendor, that you just keep renewing it or extending the contract?
Yes, when we, when we can't do without the services.
And is that a, like a policy across the board?
It's, becomes an emergency procurement, which is part of Chapter 107.
Okay. And has that worked into all the bids and contracts with any vendor?
So it's not necessarily. Now, bids are different. Bids can be extended at, at the request of the county. And so if we were to enter into a contract because of an invitation for bids, then that contract issued through procurement can be extended. Usually our wording is such until we have managed to do another solicitation and award. When it comes to RFPs, they have an end date. And the only way to extend them is to, is to, the department director has to request to the procurement director, emergency authority to continue that contract.
If we had, we were doing business with ICS and we were doing it on the, on the revenue share model, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And at some point, and I can't remember, we're in the timeline, this council said, no, we don't want to keep gouging our, our inmates. We want to go to a basic call system. Was there any discussion to go back to them and say, hey, take that off of, off the bill?
So I think Tricia can speak to that. I do believe there was request. And I, and, and she can talk a little bit, or Doug can talk a little bit more about what those rates are. They certainly did, I know they did, I heard that they did not come down to the level of their zero revenue proposal from the last RFP, but I think they did lower them some.
So when you say lower their rate, they took some of that profit out that we would normally have got?
Oh, I'm going to let Doug and Tricia answer that question. I'm sure I'm going to botch it. I'll, I'll let them talk about that piece.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. Ms. Keating, how long have you been in your position with the county?
So I've been in a lot of positions with the county in the past few years. So which, which one?
What I'm most interested in is how long have you been with procurement in the county?
With procurement? I was the acting procurement director for about a year in 2018. And then I was acting procurement director for almost, I think, two, year and a half, maybe 18 months during this time period. I'm no longer, as of May, we have a, a non-acting, a real procurement director.
And, and your complete tenure with the county is how long?
I've been here 12 years.
12 years. And in that 12 years, have you always been involved at one level or another in the procurement process?
I have not.
How long have you been involved in a procurement process?
Just that time period. And then since then, you know, I became the deputy director and now the acting director. So that, that division reports to me. So I'm very involved, you know, with managing.
To the extent that you have been involved in procurement, how many RFPs would you say you've been personally involved in? As oversight or handle?
Yeah. So, you know, the procurement director has to, has, since the legislation passed in 2018, we play a much larger role in RFPs. So we're going to send to council, you know, the determination method. You know, we'll fill that out for the department to send to council. And then we now certify the process so that we're there to make sure that all the procedures are followed correctly. So I want to say that probably about 75, maybe? I, I'd have to check. Over, just over the past 18 months or so, we've done about probably 60 and then there were some in the previous time.
And in those 75, have you ever referred any of those 75 with concerns or worries that there was anything undue or untoward in terms of outside influence?
No. I think, I think that I, I've been pretty satisfied and I've felt very strongly and, and really, you know, about, about political appointees, you know, not really evaluating. That can be difficult because when, you know, when the county executive wants to do an RFP or the county council wants to do an RFP, you, you want to have a role in that. But the question is, is, you know, who, who should be making those decisions on behalf of the county? So I, I have been very adamant that, that distance be maintained.
And, and so if it were a council-inspired RFP, it would not be appropriate for me to try and influence you, would it?
Oh, no.
And you would take offense at that, I take it, if I tried to do so?
I would. I, I'm going to look at what an evaluation committee, a group of people are going to make that decision, not one person.
And as you stand here today, just you personally, do you have any concerns or worries about any undue influence or outside influence with respect to this contract to Securus?
I do not.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one follow-up, Ms. Keating. Five RFPs, right? Is that what we were up to?
Yes.
Why didn't you just do the, the co-op selection from the beginning?
Before? Well, the, the legislation passed in 2018, so we couldn't. Co-ops were, were really, our authority to, to utilize co-ops was nowhere near where it was until Councilwoman Wassinger passed the legislation to change Chapter 107. So, you know, we, I think at that time, we had already started to go out or were preparing to go out for the third one. And then the fourth one was so drastically different because of that, that lack of revenue sharing that I felt we, and we felt it was important to see what was going to come back from a solicitation. And so we did that. And then to do it again and repeat it, I mean, these vendors, they, it costs a lot to put together these proposals and to have to keep doing it, you know, is, we, we already lost a lot of proposers, you know, the ones that were around on the first and second are like, this is ridiculous, and they've dropped out. So our, you know, we, you'll see that, you know, some that were early on are not in later proposals. They don't submit proposals later. So I think that once we got to this point and said, you know, we know what we want, we know what we should expect based on this, all these proposals that we received on this RFP, and we can get what we want and not have, you know, these costs for our inmates, then we were, felt confident that we could, we could execute a contract through a cooperative and be, be comfortable getting what we wanted and knowing that we have something that's fair, reasonable, and, and best value for the county.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Keating?
Just one more question, please. And, and you mentioned that you have a committee that's doing this. So this is a committee of people who are, I guess, industry people who would know about what you're talking about. Is this an open process to the public? Is this just your committee? Is anybody else around or can, can sit in? For instance, if one of the council members wanted to sit in on one of those things that were not pertaining to us? Is that, is that possible? So who sits in on these things?
So, yeah. So when, when a department requests to, to use the RFP method, in, in addition to the paperwork that they submit as they're getting ready to ask you guys for permission, if it's over 100,000, they also have to submit to procurement the list of subject matter experts or have to be at least three subject matter experts per ordinance on that committee. And so those, those people are, are submitted to the buyer who's, who's overseeing that procurement. We also ask for all of the evaluation rubric so that we have all the criteria so that it cannot be changed or modified at any point in this process, unless we might need to brush up on something. But what we don't want is there to be a difference in the scoring when we solicit an RFP from when we actually score it. So that becomes part of the process and the certification. That all gets submitted at the onset. They also actually sign conflict of interest forms. And so stating that they have no conflict of interest in this and that they have no relationship with, you know, any of the, of the proposers, you know? And that's done, that's submitted by every evaluation committee. So, and then every evaluation committee has one buyer from procurement who attends all the meetings and helps guide them if they have any questions. So they don't make any missteps along the way and just answer questions. And just, and to tell me later on that, that the process was followed correctly so that I can certify it. So I, usually that committee is established right at the onset and it doesn't change unless someone is sick or can't, you know, has to be, has to be replaced. And I, I, I've often, we've also often questioned whether anyone else can be on that committee. This is difficult because they also have to be county employees. So we do RFPs for boards, like the retirement board. And it's frustrating for them because they can't sit on that evaluation because they are not a, a county employee.
So I guess my question is, in your committee style and, and you have that, are there any observers?
I know. That's where I'm getting to. So there can be and there have, maybe been. But I will tell you now that our practice going forward is that our new procurement director feels that only subject matter experts need to be in there. They can be observers, but they have to know their subject. They can't be there purely to gawk, that's his words, or to, you know, get information that then they go and talk about. Because everything's under a cone of silence. And so the, he's more strict than I was, but I'm not a, a public procurement professional, right? I just played one for a little while. And so he would say, no, in the future. Were there any in the past? I can't speak to that. But in the future, it's going to be very limited to people who only know about this and are working to award this contract.
Right. And that's with this new procurement, but, but earlier on, there could have been people sitting there, as you say, gawking or whatever, just getting information without having, being a part of the committee.
So they don't evaluate?
No, 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 no.
They would be in the minutes.
They're just listening. They're looking. And that's it. I, I'm not saying that they, they're participating at all, you know, like just saying, are they, is it open like that for other people to be sitting in on? That's my question. So thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. One last question. So in this whole process, you now understand why we're here today. You said you anticipated that this would probably happen at some point. Is there any reason why you guys wouldn't have come to the council and said, by the way, we're going around you and going to this state co-op bid? Why would that have happened that way?
I don't think that I really think about it as going around you. I think it's just another type of procurement method. And we choose a procurement method based on need and situation. And in this case, after four RFPs, there wasn't a need for another one. We knew what we were going to get when we did it. I um and so the reason why I felt like we would be here is because as we've seen over these RFPs, these two companies are highly contentious and they have lobbyists, whoever they might be. And um they are actually, I I'll be honest, they're the reason why the cone of silence exists because they're not afraid to reach out and talk to you guys and try to influence awards. And I and I probably shouldn't be saying this, but I mean, I saw it through several of these RFPs and it infuriates me. And so, you know, if we're gonna do this again, we're gonna be right back where there'll be some, you know, some situation where people are breaking a cone of silence or doing something and I could, we could avoid that by by going ahead and in and um and just using the cooperative procurement method instead of the RFP one.
So you said you saw it during some of these, these RFPs, you told me of these RFPs.
Well, I was, I think I was only around for two, maybe.
Any any lobbyists for Securus that you had to deal with or knew that they were hovering or gawking or whatever word you wanna use?
I I actually, no, because um every time we came out, we were awarded to Securus. So all we saw really were IC solutions, you know, making threats of lawsuits um and and making claims that weren't correct in my mind and um and speaking with people and trying to influence an award that should not be influenced. You know, it needs to go through a proper procurement process. So, yeah.
Any other questions for Ms. Keating?
Yeah, a couple of clarifications. Thank you. Couple of clarifications. You were saying about the cone of silence. And when we came up with that, that was around the time in this timeline that 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 came about, correct?
Yes.
It was because of this dealings on this RFP, right?
Well, I think I think this is part of it. I mean, a lot of RFPs and a lot of cooperatives, I mean, they, the majority of them pass by completely unnoticed by anybody. You know, we're going about our business, we're awarding contracts, we're getting things done. And then when when these, you know, this, these ones, as they go through, you know, create quite a stir with, um, I think there's a lot of money involved. And so there's, in my mind, these had more attention than any other RFP that we've ever done, hence the reason why I figured I'd be standing here, you know, five to six months from now.
Would you recollect, because we, prior to the cone of silence, would it be unusual or would it be commonplace for a vendor like Securus or ICS to call you and talk to you or call someone from the jail services or something like that and say, hey, how's it going? Are we there yet? Talking like that or?
You mean, prior to a contract?
Yes.
No, I mean, we are under a cone of silence, oh, prior to the cone of silence. You know, um, I I strongly, I'd never take calls like that and we, in procurement, we never do. I mean, that is not something that, we don't take solicitations from vendors. It doesn't work that way. It works the other way. You sit, you wait until we tell you that we're ready for your services and and come bid or propose, right? I, you know, I, but that doesn't stop them from reaching out to whoever they, to whomever they want to.
Do you remember at that time, did they do that? Did they reach?
Not in procurement, no.
To your department or anybody in it? Or how about Mr. Martin?
No.
Or anybody else in the government?
Not that I know of, no.
Okay. Um, okay, thank you.
Councilman Drake.
If I understand you correctly, that you considered the threat of a lawsuit by ICS as undue influence?
Um, I don't know if I would call it that, but um, you know, it's not often that that um that we hear about our choices, procurement's, and I shouldn't say procurement, the department's choices in a contract coming back to us. Me and most people, they see our process and they say, okay, they followed it. I understand. You know, they may ask and sunshine their proposal so they can learn how to do better. I've had others reach out to me and say, we want to, we really wanna be competitive on the next time you do this. What can I do to be better? You know, how how can we better meet your needs? But this one has always been contentious and just, I mean, not even reaching out, but just newspaper articles and things like that.
Yeah, but I took your statement to mean that the threat of a lawsuit was something that was unusual? Would that be fair to say in your experience?
Yeah, and yes.
And the threat of a lawsuit, at least in your opinion, as a procurement specialist, was something that was out of school?
I would say so. I I think it was unwarranted. I don't think there's any standing for something like that, but.
And the only threat of a lawsuit came from IC solutions. Is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, we have methods for contesting awards.
I understand that.
And and they, that's not something they took. They didn't take that method. You know, we have policies and procedures, so.
Their preferred course was to threaten a lawsuit.
Right.
Thank you. That's all I have.
I'm sorry. I I just want, is it normal, is it normal for your department to issue four RFPs for the same service?
It is not, no.
That's all. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Keating? Thank you very much. I know it was long.
Thank you for your patience.
Appreciate your patience and your candor. So if you if you're able to stay, just in case there's any follow-up after we talk to the others, thank you so much. Okay, um, next, if we can have Mr. Mike Chapman. Chapman, step forward. Thank you for your patience as well, Mr. Chapman. And if you could introduce yourself, I know most of us here know who you are, but if you could introduce yourself, what your current position is and what your previous role was?
My name is Mike Chapman. I'm formerly the chief operating officer of the St. Louis County Government. I have since retired and I'm now the deputy executive director of the Housing Authority of St. Louis County, which is not a county government component.
So you're still a public employee, just not for St. Louis County Government per se?
Public servant, but not for St. Louis County.
And tell me how your chain of command works there. Uh, who do you report to?
I work, I report to Shannon Kanig.
And Shannon Kanig reports to whom?
Her board. There's a board that oversees the.
And how do they get selected, the board?
That is appointed by the county executive.
Okay. So does she serve at the pleasure of the board?
Yes.
And you serve at the pleasure of her, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, I understand.
At will.
So during these times in question, at least when you got into the county executive's office, the Department of Justice Services reported through to you. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, that's it. They reported the county executive through me.
Okay. And just one email I wanted to ask you about, um, and this was an email from July 6th. I'll show it to you if you don't remember, but I'll read it to you. Tuesday, July 6th, from Doug Moore to you, asking about some questions from the Business Journal about this. Does that sound familiar to you at all?
I don't remember.
Would you like to see it?
Yes, sure.
Come on up. You can take a look at it. I'll let you look at it, then I'll ask you some questions from it. Oh, here's the second page. Look familiar? Okay. So this is an email that you wrote back to Doug Moore. And basically, he had asked questions of you at the request of Jacob Kern from the Business Journal. And I'll let you explain to the council what your response was when he asked you about your knowledge of the Securus Technologies contract.
All right, thank you. No, basically, I told him that um I was unaware of what was going on at the procurement process, departmental process um until uh Director Burris and I had a routine one-on-one meeting and uh he mentioned to me that the contract had been awarded, which um kind of caught me off guard, but I was, I was pleased to hear that. And at that time, he told me it was awarded to Securus.
Would that be unusual from your perspective as the fact that you're responsible for what happens at Department of Justice Services? That that would happen around you?
No, because I gave the directors um the, a lot of latitude in doing their jobs. I mean, I saw my my role as to be uh to create a a climate and environment that they had what they needed to succeed and um I let them do their their thing. So our communications were based more on, you know, what can I do for you? What do you need from me to to get something done? What are your pain points? That kind of thing. But uh I I off, actually, there were, I would say that uh most contracts don't even, don't even get mentioned to me. It's just, it's other than a, oh, by the way, we just uh, we just got that contract through the council on this or that project.
Okay, so did you have anything to do with the drafting of the RFP or anything at all with this contract?
No.
You didn't serve on any committees or any oversight or have input or to use, Ms. Keating, you weren't a gawker in the room or anything like that?
No, I knew it was still out there and my only concern was getting the best arrangement for the residents of the Justice Center and their families. It was a, I I completely agree with the council that a previous contract was gouging them. Um, I believe I was told by the budget director that we were getting about 800 to 900,000 dollars a year from that.
As a commission?
A commission, yeah. And and I thought that was outrageous.
So in your email, you say, um, back to Doug Moore, "In fact, I was unaware of the status of the contract until Doug Burris informed me that it had been awarded." "On the last question, there was no direction or communications of any sort between county executive staffers and DJS or the department administration related to this contract." And my question is, how do you know that?
I probably should have should have said, I'm not aware of any, but, okay.
So you are to this, as you stand here today, you're still not aware of any?
No. I mean, I stand by that statement, but it would have been more technically accurate if I said I wasn't aware of it.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Councilman Dase.
Now, this whole process did not start with Director Burris. It started back, I believe, when I think Troy Doyle was the acting over there. It's when we started looking at the, at changing from ICS. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay, so we've had several iterations of this, trying to get to the point where Director Burris is 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 um awarding the contract, if you will.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay, that's all. Thank you for right now.
Councilman Order.
Yes, thank you. Um, so you, you said you oversaw through your job at that time, the justice services, right?
Right.
Okay. And this is, uh, at the time, this was how many million dollar contract? Do you remember?
I don't know how much they made from it. I knew that we were making 800 to 900,000 dollars in the backs of our residents at our Justice Center. That's what I knew.
Okay.
And and I I did some homework on my own. I talked to some folks um in Texas who had managed to take their um their contract, similar contract down from uh, I think it was like 25 cents a phone call, for example, to uh to seven cents, I think, is what it was. And so, um, yeah, so I I wanted to do that, too. I thought that was a good way to go.
So just for argument, say, multimillion dollar contract, and you didn't know anything about this until it was awarded? Is that what you said, too?
Yeah, that's true.
So all the discussions we had here as a council and in the media?
Okay, no, no, sir. Let me, let me, let me correct myself, Councilman Harder. I was aware of the buzz within county government about that contract. I was aware of the contract. But I I I don't, I couldn't tell you how much they were making. You asked me if I knew how, you know, I think the question was something about uh what they were getting from the contract?
No, I was just about the knowing of the contract.
I knew about the contract, yes.
Okay, so you knew it was coming down at some point. He was out for bid?
I knew it was, I didn't, no, it wasn't out for bid. I knew that we were still operating under the ICS contract and I knew that we had been extending it several times and I knew that the admin department and the Justice Services Department had a keen interest in getting a new contract, a better contract for the residents of the jail. That's what I knew.
Other than the high fees with ICS, would, do you know if you, we were okay, satisfactory, not impressed with their service? What was the rating?
I don't know about that. You'd have to ask the the staff of the Justice Services Department.
Okay, so nobody ever came to you and said, hey, we need to get rid of these people. They're this or that. Any issues with them?
I I was aware that there are issues with the exorbitant cost to the to the residents and to their families.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Drake.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chapman, I want to be specific so that you know exactly what I'm asking. What I'm gonna ask you now is about the contract, and by that I mean the contract that Mr. Burris signed consistent with the cooperative agreement. I'll be clear.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'm not asking about other bids that were put out, other responses to RFPs or bids, okay? I'm only talking about this one contract.
That's clear.
We're clear? Okay. Prior to Director Burris signing off on the contract and awarding it to Securus, did you have any knowledge that he did that?
No.
And that's what you were referring to in that email. Is that correct? Now, um again, staying with this contract as I've defined it, the process that was used for that contract specifically authorizes Mr. Burris to do exactly what he did. Isn't that correct?
That's my understanding.
Right. And so there was nothing untoward or unusual using that process with him not contacting you about it, was there?
I had no reason to question that.
Right. And similarly, there was nothing untoward, unusual, or illegal with him doing so and not advising the council of that? Is that accurate?
That's my understanding.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Other questions? Councilman Dase.
Um, Ms. Chapman, in your, why do you think that that you decided to go around, I guess, the council? Because getting here, I, that was one of the first things that that I was faced, that contract. And then all of a sudden, it just disappeared and I I, you know, it just slipped my mind that we're doing that. So why would, why would that be uh an avenue that you think you would, you would, you would proceed with just kind of, kind of going around us to get that done? We were already involved in it. We had already heard a lot of things about it and the companies and that kind of thing, and then it was just nothing.
I I certainly appreciate that question. Um, I I'll speak for the, I I I'm reluctant to speak for the Department of Justice Services staff or the procurement staff. But I would imagine was that they didn't perceive this as going around the council. As Ms. Keating mentioned, the the uh, the uh cooperative agreement was actually inserted into our code by a council member. I I think they just saw that and I saw that as it was legal, it was ethical, it was moral. I had no issue with it. And and I was happy when I was informed that it was behind us, that it was behind us. But it it really did not occur to me. It had occurred to me that the competitors might have an issue with it, but it just didn't occur to me that the council might have an issue with it. And and I, so.
Well, after we had the the newspaper and, you know, reported on a lot of things that happened with this particular company in other states uh and some of the challenges that they had with the quality, that's why I asked that question. Ms. Keating, you didn't have any idea about anything adverse with this particular company?
I did not.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Drake.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Chapman, I neglected to ask you before, um, but with respect to the contract as I've defined it, did anyone try to influence you in any way with respect to your oversight of Mr. Burris?
No.
Anyone in the administration ever approach you to talk about this contract and and to any way exert your authority over Mr. Burris regarding a decision to award the contract?
Yes, sir.
So Ms. Vanke never told you to do so?
No.
Dr. Page never told you to do so?
No.
What about Mr. Calvert?
No.
Anyone else?
No.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Uh, just one last question for me is regarding your testimony here today. Did you talk to anybody in in your superior or the administration and county government about you coming here today?
My current superior, Shannon Kanig, I obviously, to take time off from work to be here, I let her know. And she supported my being here. I did contact a couple of my former colleagues from the county executive's office, but that was to ask them if they'd be available to catch up over dinner. I told them I was in Clayton for the meeting and asked them if they'd be free. That was it.
Did you talk to those colleagues about your testimony here today?
No, I did not.
That didn't come up?
No.
Okay. Anything else?
One, I forgot to ask you. You mentioned that there was a council member that um had inserted the uh cooperative agreement process?
Ms. Wassinger.
That was Ms. Wassinger? Okay.
And and frankly, I, if I could, a little editorial commentary, I worked very closely with her in re-crafting of section 107 of the code and um and all of you probably already know this already, but I'll just wanna stress it that as as the chief operating officer, I saw my role as to protect the integrity of the procurement process. So honestly, I was quite pleased when I found out that, when I found out after the fact that this is all done, had been. done, had been run through the normal course of things. I'm a big believer that procurement should be handled by departmental subject matter experts, procurement experts, and the only political person involved in the process should be the director of that department. And their involvement should be prescribed as it is in Section 107, so.
And just to follow up on what you just said, so the director had announced that they were going to go out for bid again, right? Did you listen to that testimony earlier when I read the timeline?
Yeah.
So obviously, that some decision was made at some point, "No, we're not going out for bid again, or do an RFP again. We're just going to go off the state contract." Were you involved in that discussion at all?
No, I wasn't.
So it was a complete surprise?
I knew it was up in the air. I mean, because Director Burris and I would meet, you know, every, every week and just talk about what's going on. I knew it was up in the air. I know, I knew that no decision had been made. And, and, and between Doug and myself, Doug Burris and myself, you know, we just didn't communicate about it. And then one day he said, "Oh, by the way, that telecommunications contract, you know, we've awarded it." And I was taken aback, but I was ecstatic. I'll be honest with you. I was glad that it was over because we needed it.
Any other questions for?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Does, I do not believe Mr. Chapman needs to stay for any further questions. Does anyone else have a need for him to stay?
No, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Really appreciate you coming in. And we know you didn't have to, so we appreciate that.
Good to see you again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Does anybody need a break? Want to keep going?
Yep.
I wouldn't mind like five minutes.
Okay. Can we take a very short recess? What do we do there, Kevin, or county counselor? We just announced we're going to take a short recess.
Councilman, you'll need to specify the time to which you are recessed.
All right, so it's ten minutes to five right now, assuming that clock is correct again.
It is.
So let's, is five minutes long enough as the councilman's request? So we will take a break for five minutes and return.
Thank you.
All right.
For members of the, excuse me, for members of the public listening in, the council is currently in recess and will return here in just a couple of minutes. Thank you.
There's like graph. Join us when he's ready.
Members of the public listening, the chair has taken his seat, and we will resume the meeting here.
Okay, well, reconvene the meeting. Thank you for your patience, and it was nice to have a short break. We usually don't get those. So if we can have Department of Justice Services Director Doug Burris step forward. Mr. Burris, thank you for joining us today. I know you're a short timer. Your last day is Friday.
Yes.
So we really appreciate you being here today. So if you could tell those that don't know who you are, a little bit about what your current role is and how long you've been in that role.
I am Doug Burris. I'm the Director of Justice Services, and I've been in that role for one year.
So one year, and you are leaving that position on Friday?
Yes.
Okay. So some of the questions, you've heard a lot of the conversation today. So I know you kind of inherited this whole video communication or communications issue. It kind of landed in your lap. So you're familiar with, you heard some of the testimony. So what, so one of my initial questions for you is, at some point, you got a call and said, "You're getting Securus Technologies." If I remember our conversation correctly in the back room here on the fourteenth of July, with, it was Councilwoman Daze and her assistant, myself and you, we were talking about jail raises, if you remember that conversation. And I asked you, "How did this happen? How did we have it on our agenda?" It disappears off of our agenda, and the next thing we know, we have Securus Technologies doing this work. And I'll let you respond to what you told us that day.
As I told you then, you, you and Chair Daze, that I was informed by Tricia Rogers, who's here today as well, that the, the contract was going through the cooperative agreement and that, that there was a vendor that met all of the requirements that would be at a substantially reduced rate, and that Securus was going to be the vendor that would receive that.
All right. Who delivered that message to you that Securus had been selected?
Ms. Rogers.
So, and we'll get to her in just a moment because we're going to have to ask her, you know, how that happened. So did you have to make any phone calls at that point or tell anybody or talk to your boss or, and your boss then was, your direct supervisor then was, we just heard from him?
Right, Mike Chapman, right.
Right.
And, and no, it was, she told me that, but it was still going to take some time to get the paperwork signed and back and forth. So no, I did not report that to anybody.
And then this process took a life of its own and moved forward. And did you ever have a conversation with Mr. Chapman about this, this process, this Securus Technologies being awarded this bid, this contract?
I did a few weeks after everything had been completed at our one, we had a weekly one-on-one meeting that was done virtually. And the purpose of those meetings were always set up to do problem solving. And this seemed to be working fine, so we'd be talking about problems and not talking about things that seemed to be working okay. So that's why I never brought it up until after it came up several weeks after it had been awarded.
Great. And then were you familiar, did you know that Winston Calvert from the County Executive's Office had been a lobbyist for Securus Technologies?
No, sir.
Would that have been concerning to you if you would have found that out during this process?
I, I did find out several, you know, months later after everything had been completed. And I, I thought it was interesting, but in working with Ms. Keating and Ms. Rogers, it really seemed like we did everything that we should going through the proper channels.
So did you have any conversation with anybody in the County Executive's Office, Mr. Calvert, anybody in the administration about Securus Technologies being selected to do this kind of work for the justice services?
No, sir. And in fact, my, my interaction with Mr. Calvert has been so limited up until the time that the contract was awarded, I had maybe three conversations with him. And then the communications contract never came up with anyone in the Ruth Building.
Did Ms. Rogers or anyone else tell you there were other possibilities that could have been selected off of this state contract as opposed to Securus?
No.
Did you feel like you had a choice to pick Securus, or maybe there was another vendor that you wanted to talk with or had a preference of? Did you have a choice?
I, I felt that, no, I did not feel I had a choice. I thought the best vendor was selected, and it was going to be at a drastically reduced rate. In fact, I want to thank the members of the council for not allowing a profit on that. I did the math during earlier testimony, and going from twenty-one cents, dropping it by seventy-one percent would be six point oh nine percent. So it actually dropped to five cents. So that's between seventy-six and seventy-seven percent.
Okay.
At the rate that it had dropped.
Okay. Thank you for doing that math for us. Appreciate that. Okay, let me see here. Excuse me, just a moment. I will go ahead and let the other council members ask questions, and I'll come back.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Daze.
Please, thank you. Mr. Burris, in looking at the, the contract, you really didn't have any intimate involvement in the selection of that, if I'm hearing you correctly?
That's absolutely correct.
So, so however it happened and whatever was not you, it was saying, "This is who you're going to take."
Yeah, I was told this is the one that met the, the needs and at a drastically reduced rate.
So, and your, who was in your department that was an industry specialist that was involved in the, getting this contract?
Ms. Rogers.
Oh, that's, okay. All right. So she's the only one from your area?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'll have to ask her these questions because she would probably know about that. But I'm, I'm, I'm really interested in the company itself and the reputation of this company and, and the kinds of things that have been reported in this company. And it seems that nobody has, on any level, has looked into that. So I, I'll reserve that for later. So thank you. Thank you.
Councilman Harder.
Yes. Mr. Burris, so if I'm understanding this correctly, is that Ms. Rogers came to you at some day and said, "This is going to be our new vendor starting X date." Is that how it was presented to you?
Very similar to that. It was, there is a vendor that meets all of the qualifications at a drastically reduced rate that we're going to utilize. So, yes. And then it wasn't that it's been selected and it's done. It's then, now we have to get the contract signed and go through the procedures.
Was there a start date discussed at that time?
No, there wasn't.
Okay. And that's his last adoration of the one we did with the, using the state contract system, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So you weren't on staff on the other RFPs or other, other timeline issues that we talked about?
No, sir.
Okay. And when did you come on to the justice service?
In late September of last year.
So one year, okay. So 2020, okay. And in your previous roles with the federal system, have you ever run across Securus or any of their competitors?
No, I, in my previous positions, I worked for the federal court that supervised people when they were released. So we did not have any authority over people or systems in custody.
Okay. So you never worked in a jail system before that had this system installed?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. So the, let's see. So, and you report, at that time, you reported to Mike Chapman, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And how often would you interact with him on any basis?
We had a weekly meeting set up every Monday. And so that would take place averaging probably, I would say, half an hour, just going over problems that were happening in the jail because there were a bunch when I first came on. And of course, there are progress that still needs to be made. But we would, we would have those weekly conversations. And if something came up at immediate need that I thought he should know that the press might be looking at or something along those lines, I would reach out to him, an injury in the jail or something along those lines.
So you had a standing meeting on Mondays with him?
Yes.
Was that in person or in video or talking on phone?
The majority of the time, it was virtual.
Virtual, okay. And at any of those meetings during this process, this process, did you ever talk about this contract or the progress of this contract going forward?
Never.
Okay. Did he ever talk to you about it or make a separate phone call outside your meetings about it?
No, sir.
Okay. Do you recall any conversations with anyone other than Mike Chapman about this contract in the?
Involving the circuit attorney, circuit executive's office? I mean, we, I, I talked with the, many people in the jail about, we are going to be getting a new contract, and it's going to be at a reduced rate. And we hope that this is going to reduce a lot of the fights that we were having in the jail. So I'd talked to the security staff, deputies, others in the jail. There's only one other person that I've talked to in the county executive's office about it, and that's Deanna Venker. And Diana Venker, excuse me, no, Deanna Venker, excuse me. And that was, I, the weekly meetings have, have continued with her every Monday as well. And when I go over those, those meetings, I discuss that what my schedule is going to be. And when I was asked to, to come here, I informed her that on this date I was coming here. And then additionally, we had a, if I may please back up. Also, at that meeting was Andrea Nelson, and she's a change coordinator, and she would be giving advice on bringing forth change and other things along those lines. She was at that meeting, didn't comment on anything regarding it. But then... But then getting ready for the meeting, as, as was, as Ms. Keating discussed earlier, we had a meeting yesterday with Deanna and it was just, so are you guys ready? Do you need anything? It was an extremely short meeting. And in fact, I think I said three or four sentences during the entire meeting.
Okay. So yesterday's meeting with, with Ms. Vinker and Ms. Nelson and you?
Yesterday's meeting, I'm sorry, was virtually with myself, Ms. Vinker, it was Ms. Keating, Ms. Rogers and Scott Anders, who is the Deputy over administration, the office, who will be assuming leadership role upon my leaving, just so he could understand what was going on.
Okay. And we talked earlier about the scoring committee on these. Did you have any input into who was going to be on that scoring committee?
No, that was all done prior to my, the scoring and every, the selection and the scoring was all done prior to my start date.
Was that when Colonel Doyle was the acting or was that when Mr. Bonasco was the act?
I, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. So you don't know any history back of when that started?
No, sir.
The timeline. Okay. Okay, that's all I have for now. Thanks.
Councilman Drake.
Thank you.
Yes.
No, yet.
If I may, Chairman Pitch, Councilman Drake, you're muted.
That better? Okay. My apologies. Councilman Harder just asked you about whether or not you spoke with anyone in the administration. I want to make certain I understood your answer. And what I'm asking about is conversations with anyone in the administration prior to your execution of the agreement that we're here about today. Are we clear?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any conversations with Ms. Vinker about this contract and your awarding of it, for lack of a better way to put it, prior to your signing off on the contract?
No, sir.
Okay. Any conversations with Ms. Nelson about that?
No, sir.
Any conversations with Mr. Calvert about that?
No, sir.
Any conversations with Mr. Chapman about that?
No, sir.
Any conversations with the County Executive about that?
No, sir.
Okay. How long were you involved in your work with the federal government?
23 years.
23 years. Fair to say during that time, you were involved in what I'm going to refer to generally as a procurement process?
Absolutely.
Okay. Probably dozens, if not hundreds of times, I would imagine.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So you're, the idea of a procurement process is not new to you?
That is correct.
Okay. So I want to make sure, again, I understand your, your testimony. With respect to, you said you've been, you were told or informed by Ms. Rogers that the vendor had been selected. Is that reasonably accurate?
That is correct.
Okay. And at that point, you, based on that representation, signed off on the agreement?
That is correct.
Okay. And I don't want to put words in your mouth. So if my summary of this is wrong, please tell me. But would it be fair to say that based on your 23 years' experience with the procurement process in the federal government, plus the time you had here at the county, that in being informed of that by Ms. Rogers, you relied on that process, meaning a review committee, a matrix with respect to, to bids, et cetera, in terms of the decision to select a vendor and recommend it to you?
That is correct.
Okay. And so it wasn't just simply Ms. Rogers telling you, here's the vendor, go ahead and sign it. You had a career's worth of experience with the procurement process and understood that there was a committee that had conducted a, an investigation, if you will, or a review process, applied a matrix to it and had determined who the most favorable vendor was?
Yes.
And based on that, you signed off on the agreement?
That is correct.
Okay. I think that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burris, according to Ms. Keating, she said the decision to go with the cooperative contract rests solely with your department. Are you telling us that Ms. Rogers made the decision to go with that?
I think Ms. Rogers, and she'll of course testify here shortly, I think she was under the impression that there was one vendor that was available that met the criteria.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Councilwoman Days.
Thank you. And, and Mr. Burris, I know this happened long before you got here, as all these pieces were in place. It just happened to culminate under your administration. But I, I, I want to make sure that I'm clear that when you, when you received this information, your information came only from Ms. Rogers. You talked to nobody else about this. You didn't ask any questions, but Ms. Rogers was the one that said the, this is the company that we're going to use?
Yes.
And that nobody else?
That's correct.
So when you talked to Ms. Rogers, were you, did you ever ask her, how did you get to this conclusion?
We did talk about that. And she said that she had talked with Ms. Keating and there was one vendor that met the criteria. And that I, it's my understanding from that conversation that, that the, that Securus was that company that we, we could utilize that would meet the needs.
Okay. And so that came from Ms. Keating to Ms. Rogers to you?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all.
Director Burris, oh, I'm sorry. Do you have a question? Just a follow-up. So in this process, this loop, did you have any say in any of this or was it just, we're notifying you that this is who we're going with and, you know, figure out how to make it work?
I was notified by Ms. Rogers that we have a vendor that's, that is available, that we can do this. And here's the, here's how much cheaper it's going to be and what the services, how the service is going to differ. And I think I could have had the ability to say, well, I want to keep this 74, 78% higher rate and do something. But I was just thrilled at the opportunity to save the money for the residents of the facility.
Was your opinion ever solicited in any of this process?
No.
Okay. So, so Ms. Rogers just came to you and said, this is what, everything's been decided?
What is available, right.
What is available. And there was no input? It was just, thank you very much. And that was the end of the conversation?
Yes.
Okay. So you had no input into any of this from?
I, I, I think I had the ability to say, no, we don't want to do this. That would have been the input that I, I had, that I think was available. But I don't think there was any beyond that.
And but you do have, in any kind of contract bid, you do have the ability to say, no, I don't like that? Or is it because of price? You don't like the vendor? I mean, how would you be able to make that decision?
Yeah, that, that is correct. And this was relatively new into my tenure with the facility. So I, I trusted the way that the system worked, that this was what was available and it was at a considerable savings. So I did not have a whole lot of questions.
Okay. So is your understanding that this looks good to me and we'll move forward and move on to other problems?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Burris, Director Burris, were you told there were other options other than Securus that maybe even have been cheaper options? And do the same thing?
I was not, sir.
And so Ms. Rogers never had that conversation with you? And perhaps we'll hear from her whether or not she knew that there were other options. So, but you were not aware of any other options?
That is correct. And Ms. Rogers never shared any?
And let's say Securus has this great price. Is there anything from your knowledge that would say that the other companies couldn't match that or even make it lower?
No, I trusted the system and I thought that that would probably be done before it caught to my level.
Okay. And then on October 27th of 2020, you testified at the Justice Health and Welfare Committee meeting that you were starting, restarting the bid process on this. And then I think if I heard you right, the next thing you know is you're being told that Securus has got it. Is that right?
I was, I was being told that it was going to be, go through the cooperative and that the bidding would not be necessary. I can't remember if I was, that was the moment I was told it was secure or so, or it was a conversation afterwards.
Okay. And who told you about the cooperative? What were that conversation? Was that Ms. Rogers?
Ms. Rogers.
So you never had any conversation with Ms. Keating or anybody in her office about that particular topic that they were going to look at the cooperative instead of the bid process?
No.
Did you tell or have any conversation with Mr. Chapman, your direct supervisor? Obviously, he would have been paying attention to the Justice Health and Welfare Committee meeting, right? About you saying it's going to go be rebid. Did he, did he ever come to you and say, hey, change of plans, we're not going to rebid it?
No, he did not.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Yes, Councilman Drake.
Thank you. Director Burris, you testified and to your words, you trusted the system, the way it worked, right?
Yes.
And was that system similar to what you had come to be comfortable with in 23 years of the federal government?
It is, there are some minor differences, but it is extremely similar.
And as a director, whether here at the Justice Services or for the federal government, isn't it typical and in fact necessary for someone like yourself to be able to rely on subordinates and other people from procurement to do the analysis and give you the results of that analysis?
Absolutely.
Now, as you stand here today, do you have any reason to believe that Ms. Rogers or anyone else in the process was unduly influenced by anyone in the administration or a lobbyist or any other source?
No, in fact, Ms. Rogers, I would trust with my grandchildren's life. I have that much faith in her.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I have.
Any other questions from the committee? Does anyone need Mr. Burris to stay or can he be released from your perspective?
Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Super quickly say thank you for last night. It tugged at my heart. And I shared with Chairwoman Days that my wife watched it on TV because she could not get off work. And she prepared my favorite meal. She was so impressed when I got home.
Well, great.
You're quite welcome.
We're glad, we're glad it worked out for you. Thank you again for your service.
Congratulations. Good luck to you.
Best of luck in retirement.
All right. So Ms. Rogers, can you step up, please? And again, we've met you earlier. So we just have a few questions for you and I'll start. The main question I have is we heard, you heard the director say that you came to him and said, we're getting Securus. Can you tell us how that happened?
Yes, I talked to Ms. Keating and she told me that we could use a cooperative contract through NASBO in the state of Missouri and they were using Securus. We had picked Securus and three other RFPs. They are a good company. So I went to Mr. Burris and I told him that we could get a contract using this cooperative.
Okay. And, and did Ms. Keating tell you there were other options?
No, she did not.
Did, did you have any clue or do you know what's on the other, the state contract? Do you know what other companies are on that?
No, I knew state of Missouri used Securus. I did not know they had other contracts.
Right. Did you ask her, are there, or do we have to go with Securus? Or were you just, I guess, satisfied that Securus had been selected?
I was satisfied with Securus.
So then, did you go to, I don't want to put words in your mouth, is it fair to say you went to Mr. Burris at that point and said, I was told that we're getting Securus?
No, I went to him. I told him that we could use them. He agreed that was okay. And then I went back to Securus to start negotiating to see if we could get the rates we wanted.
Were you on any of the previous RFP, any of the committees where Securus was picked or part of the RFP process from the, all the other selections?
I was on all of them.
All of them? Did, was Securus ever declined on any of those RFPs?
Yes, one of them.
And why?
Another vendor put in a better proposal. They had lower, lower rates.
And why weren't they selected, the other company?
It was with the previous county executive and he would not let us execute a contract with them.
I couldn't hear it.
It was with the previous county executive and he would not let us execute a contract with them.
With that company?
Yes.
Do you know who it was?
It was Legacy.
Legacy. And they offered the same services as Securus?
Yes.
Was there every explanation why Mr. Stanger would not allow you all to go with that contract?
What I was told by our previous director was Mr. Stanger wanted us to pick ICS solutions.
Okay. All right. That doesn't surprise me. Okay. What other questions for the committee? Councilman Harder.
Ms. Rogers, so ICS, what was, what's your involvement in it? What role did you play?
I was the project manager.
And worked for the Justice Services, right?
Yes.
Okay. And what is your role there?
I'm the corrections compliance supervisor, but I have dealt with inmate phones for the last 20 years.
Phone contract, I guess, came under your job title, I guess?
Yes.
In the past?
Councilman Pitch, Chairman Pitch, could we have Mr. Harder unmute the microphone?
Got it. So so in your job, you dealt with the, the past contracts with the phone system, correct?
Yes.
How many other contracts have you dealt with?
Probably four or five contracts.
Okay. And you worked for the Justice Services how long?
25 years.
25 years. Okay. And who do you report to?
I report to Dexter Swims.
Dexter?
Swims.
Okay. And his role is?
He's a major.
Okay. Just an officer in the, in the management of the jail?
Yes.
Okay. And who does he report to?
He reports to Superintendent Reed.
Okay. And Superintendent Reed reports to?
Deputy Director Darby Howard.
Okay. And then the director?
Yes.
Okay. So on a daily basis, you deal with procurement mostly in the jail?
No.
You don't?
I have many other jobs.
Okay. So in this case, were you on the scoring committee for this, this bid?
Yes.
Okay. How many other people were on that scoring committee?
I'm on this last one. I believe there were four other people.
Okay. Do you remember who, who was on that committee?
No, I, we had so many different ones, I can't remember. I could look them up for you.
Okay. And did that committee change every time the process changed?
Yes, it did.
Okay. So the last committee, was that still five people?
I'm pretty sure we had five people on it, yes. I would have to check, though.
So even though you were going through the state system, you would still do a score?
No, this last one, we did not. The last RFP we did last year, we had a scoring committee.
Okay.
We did not score the one we went through the state.
Okay. Did you use the information from that last score when you picked the, the current bid?
Yes, we were familiar with them since we had picked them on three different RFPs.
Okay. And did you have access to this state or national database for these vendors?
No.
Okay. So that was given to you to present? So you, you were on the scoring committee, gave that information to procurement and then procurement came back to you and said, this is the vendor you're going to use?
No. So this last one, so I had talked with Jen Keating about how are we going to go put another RFP out? And that's when she told me that we could use a cooperative contract.
Okay.
So she told me the state of Missouri had Securus. And that's when I talked to Mr. Burris about us using them.
When you say the state of Missouri, you mean the, the justice system in, in the Missouri?
Yeah, the state prisons are using Securus in their prisons for their telephone service.
Throughout the state?
Yes.
Okay. So they have a, every, every jail uses them?
Yes.
Okay. Have we ever used Securus in the past?
No.
Okay. Are they a fairly new firm?
No, they're not.
They're not. Okay. And were you not satisfied with ICS?
No, we were not satisfied with them at all.
Okay. Were there issues with them that you were not satisfied with?
Yes, the service that they were providing had gone downhill. We had them since 2007. They didn't have 24-hour service anymore. We weren't getting good customer service from them. We had a lot of difficulties with them.
Okay. Was it hardware, software?
Both.
Both?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I remember hearing something about that phones were broken or, you know, they didn't come and service them or, is that true?
Yes.
Okay. And has that been corrected with Securus?
Yes.
Okay. And how many phones as part of this contract did they provide?
We just changed, I believe it was 204 maybe.
Throughout the jail?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess so many per floor?
Per pod.
Okay. And for, so when people use that, they have a swipe card or how do they charge the fee that we do charge?
They have two ways. The inmate can have money on their account. They can pay for phone calls or their family, they can call the family collect and the family pays for the calls.
Okay. And how long is this new contract for?
It's three years with two one-year renewals.
Three years are?
With two, one additional year renewals.
After the three years?
Yeah.
And that started on when?
I believe it was April. I don't know the exact date. April this year.
April this year for three years. Okay. And if we're dissatisfied with that, is there ways of breaking that contract?
Yes.
Okay. Think of some other ones that are dealing with that. I'll, I'll give my time. Councilwoman Days.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. I'm going to be as gingerly as I can ask this question, but I'm going to read something to you and I want you to react to it. In 2020, ICS had asked the county council to delay a vote, releasing emails with procurement officials that showed the tablets were not a part of the county's original request for bid proposals. The company also publicly shared emails that showed ICS had given the county two choices. One, charging 1.3 cents a minute with a $3 setup fee with a debit card. And the other was charging 1.6 cents per minute with no setup fee, but was told by a procurement officer to submit a bid but was told by a procurement officer to submit a bid with the fee option. Are you aware of any of that?
No, I'm not.
Okay, when you, and you are, I guess, are the, considered the industry specialist on that committee or whatever it was, initially when we started with the RFP, right?
Yes.
You were then, did you have an opportunity to look into the history of Securus or any of the other vendors that we, that probably submitted a bid?
Yes, I have been since 2016 when we started this process. Every time we did an RFP, I contacted other jails and spoke to them. I checked the BBD website and looked at the reports, incidents, complaints about them.
Were you aware that they had a $3.7 million judgment against them in Kansas?
No, I was not.
Were you aware that they had, were accused of having excessive fees?
So, I mean, the business they're in, each phone company had complaints about the excessive fees.
But these were supposed to be the lowest of whatever, that's what we were looking at. But were you aware that they had been, that had been a, an allegation against them?
Yes.
Okay, and the last thing was with, with the Kansas, Texas, California, as well as Maine, all having issues with Securus, were you aware of that?
Yes.
And that did not cause you any concern of what they were going to be bringing here in Missouri?
No, because we were going to set the rates that we wanted.
Okay. You already asked about how long the contract was. What is the process if we do not or not pleased with their services? Let's just say they start to escalate their prices or whatever without, within these three years. What, what is our recourse? How do we get out of it, in other words?
We have to keep documentation showing what they haven't done, probably submit something or write to them how they're going to correct it.
Okay, and so since, what is it, April? Since April, have you had any, any challenges at all with them?
No, I have not.
Who would be, who would be complaining? Would it be inmates complaining, families complaining, other members of whatever, the public complaining? How would that happen?
Mostly inmates and their families.
And you have not heard any, any incidents at all?
Any little incident, I have corrected, they've had issues like connecting or, because we've had video visitation, so every issue I've gotten fixed for them.
And that would come directly to you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Drakus?
Thank you. Ms. Rogers, you were on this scoring committee, is that right?
Yes.
And it's my understanding correct that the scoring committee is the one that applies the matrix that Ms. Keating spoke about?
Yes.
And you, you heard Ms. Keating's testimony earlier today, you were here, right?
Yes.
Okay, is it accurate that Securus scored the highest on that matrix in every RFP?
Not every RFP, there's one maybe not.
Three of four, I guess.
Yeah, three of the four.
Okay, you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, now with respect to issues, you're very familiar in what you do with the type of services that are being talked about in this contract, that is telephone services and/or IT services for detainees or inmates at facilities.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So would it be fair to say in your experience that it is not unusual for a vendor to have complaints?
No, it's not unusual at all.
Would it be fair to say that it would be unusual if he didn't have complaints?
Yes.
Okay, now, let's talk about Securus and ICS specifically. You've already testified that at least as far as you knew and your understanding, you had, the county had serious problems with ICS's performance, is that fair to say?
Yes.
Okay, now comparing your history with ICS over how many years?
Since 2007.
Okay, and the experience with Securus, what's the difference in terms of the satisfaction level in terms of the performance of services?
Well, Securus had a lot more staff, they can deal with a lot of issues right away. ICS Solutions lost a lot of staff, they didn't have the staff in place to deal with complaints. They weren't 24 hours to help us with our issues. I think Securus is better equipped to deal with any issues.
So at least as far as your concern, as a member of the scoring committee before the fact and now what you know after the fact, are you satisfied with Securus's performance under the agreement?
Yes, I am.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Ms. Rogers, how long have we now had Securus fully installed at the Justice Services?
Phones were installed May of this year and then we started video visitation in July and then tablets are coming this month.
So they're not fully implemented yet?
Not yet.
So this is pretty new?
Yes.
And that you've received virtually no complaints about Securus to this point?
No.
Were you around when ICS first started their business with Department of Justice Services?
Yes.
Were they satisfactory at the beginning?
At the very beginning, yes.
So do you see that as the same comparison to what you're dealing with now? I mean, would you say that ICS was, is efficient and effective at the beginning of their services as Securus has been at the beginning of theirs?
Yes.
So it's really apples and oranges, right, to sit, to try to compare long-term and short-term?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure we're on the same page as far as dates go. Did you have any conversation with anyone about your testimony here today before coming today?
We had a meeting yesterday with Mr. Burris, Ms. Keating and Deanna Venker.
Okay, and was that the, okay, so you were on that same video, video conference meeting? All right, all right, any other questions for Ms. Rogers? Councilwoman Days?
You mentioned earlier that Legacy, I believe you, did you say Legacy?
Yes.
Was rejected? They, they came in, I guess, as one of the good vendors that you would have selected and the county executive said no. Okay, were they one of the five in, one of the eligible in the cooperative, I guess you'll call it? Were they one of those in the cooperative?
No, because they were bought out by another company.
You know who bought them out?
Endevo.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions for Ms. Rogers?
Thank you, Ms. Rogers.
Does anyone need Ms. Rogers to stay?
No.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for coming and thank you for your patience. Okay, we're ready to move on to Securus Technologies, Mr. Anderson, if you could rejoin us?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you for coming back. Appreciate you staying in, I know this is going long, so just some questions for you. Who is, can you tell us who Russell Roberts is with your company?
He's our chief growth officer, so he is one of our, our senior leadership members.
So he's still with the company?
Yeah.
Okay, and who, who is National Strategies Incorporated?
It is a, a firm that helps us locate consultants in, in different cities if we need to utilize them.
Okay, so are you familiar with Winston Calvert?
I know the name, I've never met him or spoken to him.
Did he have any role with your company whatsoever that you're aware of?
He was brought on by our two local consultants to assist for a few months, I think, during procurement number three.
And who were those two local consultants?
Earl Scissors and Sarah Wood Martin.
And what's the name of their company?
I believe it's Gateway Government, I don't know if that's the, the full proper name.
So who, who suggested to Securus that you bring on Mr. Calvert to lobby for you?
Gateway.
So Mr. Scissors and the alderwoman from the city, is that right?
Correct.
Did you have any conversation with anybody in county government, specifically Sam Page, about bringing Mr. Calvert on as a lobbyist for your company?
No.
Did anybody in your company, to your knowledge, have that conversation?
No.
Okay, so you basically listened to what you were told by Mr. Scissors and Ms., I keep, you used a different last name than we did.
I, I believe Sarah Wood Martin is her full name.
What was it, I couldn't hear you?
Sarah Wood Martin.
Wood, is, Sarah Martin is what I have, so you, you call her by Sarah Wood Martin? Okay.
I believe that's her full name, yes.
Her and Mr. Scissors still consult with you or lobby for you?
Yes.
So what was the purpose in bringing Mr. Calvert on board to lobby who?
I, I would have to ask Earl and Sarah that question.
Did he lobby, did he lobby, are you aware that Mr. Calvert lobbied on behalf of your company to try to get the business from St. Louis County?
I, I was brought on to help Earl and Sarah with us working through the process. I don't know what the specifics of that discussion were.
Was your company involved at all in helping develop any of the RFPs you've heard discussion about today?
No.
Okay, so they, wasn't, Winston Calvert wasn't involved in that whatsoever, helping develop RFPs?
I never spoke or, or met Winston Calvert or provided him anything from my company, so no.
So is your, is your answer then, you don't know if he was?
I, I've never provided that to Earl or Sarah, so I have no idea how Mr. Calvert would have gotten anything along those lines.
Are you familiar with the law, the law firm, you've heard me describe them as Simmons, Simmons, Hanley and Conroy?
That was the first time I ever heard that name.
So you've never heard of Simmons before?
No.
Are you familiar with the fact that Gateway Government Relations is also a lobbyist for this law firm, Simmons?
No.
So you're not familiar with that at all?
I, I don't know who the rest of their client base is.
Does your company give money for campaigns?
Not normally, we did none in St. Louis.
So your company, as far as you know, has never provided any money to any candidate committee or any PAC in St. Louis County?
Correct.
And this law firm that you say you've never heard of until today, is it possible somebody else in your company would know about this law firm?
I don't think so.
I mean, you both share the same lobbyists and I guess that's, that's my question. Is you share, your company, Securus, shares a lobbyist with this law firm in Alton, Illinois?
And I'm.
Mr. Scissors and Ms. Martin?
I don't know any of their other clients, there would be no reason for me to talk to them. What we do is a unique business, so I didn't go outside and look for anybody else that they support.
When you said you don't normally give campaign contributions, so you have in the past, is that what you meant by that?
To other places, not to St. Louis County.
What would be the reason of giving campaign contributions?
Sometimes there's golf tournaments for sheriffs, things along those nature and they would qualify as campaign contributions and if we're the incumbent provider in those situations, we would support that golf tournament event, that's normally when it occurs.
Okay, and did, did you ever talk to anybody about lobbying, lobbying this council? Because we heard some testimony of that earlier, that, that lobbyists were brought on board to lobby the council for Securus?
We didn't bring on to lobby anything, I think it's shown throughout this process, there's a lot of things you need to go through to execute a contract in St. Louis County. Brought on Sarah and Earl after the first procurement was awarded to us and then overturned, so we can make sure that we didn't run into that during the second RFP process, which obviously did not work out because we're, went through five RFPs.
So what was the purpose in bringing on Gateway Government Relations? What you're?
Just what I said, so if we get an award, to understand and make sure we do all the things right on the RFP, to make sure we understand what the county's processes are so we can get from an award to an executed contract. Because if it wasn't a clean transition the first time through, we got the award and then the contract never came to be.
Okay, I'll come back, I'll let the council members ask other questions. Councilman Harder?
Yes. Mr. Lewis, is it?
Anderson, sir.
Anderson, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No worries.
So what is your role in the Securus company?
Sales Vice President.
Okay, so were you handling this RFP or this bid process yourself?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you've been intimately involved throughout or are you new to this?
I, I've been involved in all the four RFPs that were issued, the fifth one that did not go through and the NASBO process.
Okay, so just so I understand the relationship, did your company hire Gateway Group?
National Strategies technically hired them, they're our consultant locating firm we work through. And that's you, Commissioner Fitch.
Okay, so you, your company hires National Strategies, you said?
Yes.
Are they your national lobbying firm? What do you?
They're not a lobbying firm, they're a locating firm.
A locating firm, what does that mean?
To help us find, if, I don't know a specific area of the country or I don't know a city or a county, they know individuals and those that can set us up to interview and speak with someone to see if they'd be a good fit to partner if, if we needed help understanding how a procurement or a county government process works.
Okay, so, so this national group then hires Gateway to help out?
Yes.
And Gateway has Ms. Martin and Mr. Scissors working for them?
Correct.
Are they the only employees?
Those are the only two I'm familiar with, I don't know if they have any other employees.
Okay, and Mr. Calvert says in one of his, I guess, in the timeline, that he's working for Securus. Is that wrong?
I never spoke to Mr. Calvert directly, all of his conversations were with Gateway.
Okay, so when he registered as a lobbyist at some point, he was not a lobbyist for Securus?
I, I don't have the form you're looking at, so I was provided none of that before getting on the, the call today, so I'm, I, I don't know how he registered, sir.
Okay, but under your understanding, he, he was working with Gateway or for Gateway?
Yes.
Okay, so you pay National, National pays Gateway for the services, is that how that works?
Yes.
Okay, and those services are spelled out in some contract of what they can and can't do?
Yes, an overview of just what our shared agreement is, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you for now. Ms. Days?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Yes, ma'am.
As I ask, and I'm sure, I'm not sure if you were listening for the other part.
Yes, ma'am.
These, some, some troubling instances have come up with your company and I really would kind of like you to have an opportunity to explain some of those. Looking at a, a $3.7 million lawsuit and I'm not sure what happened with that, but it was also alleged that you had, some families were saying that, you know, the calls were listened in on, things like that. So can you talk to us first of all about just lawsuits in the, in the various states that have those with you, thank you.
Sure, well, as, as Tricia kind of pointed out, we've been in business for about 34 years and I have 3,400 customers nationally. So with what we do, we do generate complaints from time to time. So addressing the rates and fees issue first, I do not set the call rates or the fees, I work with the agency on that. So if they request a call rate in RFP, we bid to that rate. So if the community doesn't like that rate, we're the one that's billing the call so that we'll fall back on Securus. So if a facility wants to mirror what St. Louis County has done and move towards the lowest pay rate possible, removing any commission, Council, Councilman Fitch, it was 76.67% was the decrease there, without looking at the fee, by the way, from the earlier question on what that decrease was on the rate. So if the request is made to drop rates, we'll always do that. We also do not increase rates on our customers without any discussion with them, so that's not anything that will occur at any time during our service to St. Louis County. In Kansas, what occurred there was the recording of some conversations that were supposed to be privileged calls. When we're serving larger facilities, one of the things we spend a lot of time doing is making sure that we're capturing all privileged numbers so they can be removed from the database so those calls are not recorded. And unfortunately, in that case, there was an error human-wise that those numbers were not entered and that record, that resulted in the recording of those calls.
Okay, and so did the same thing happen in Texas and California and Maine? Were those basically the same kinds of issues?
I think the Texas issue, I don't know what you're referencing on that one, so I'm not sure what that is specifically. There was questions raised on rates in Texas, I believe, and I think we've answered those. In California, there was a question regarding a different competitor regarding that same recording of privileged telephone calls. And, and on Maine, I'm not familiar with the issue you raised on Maine.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Drakus? No questions.
Mr. Anderson, I had asked for someone from Securus to be available today to talk about political contributions and I think I heard you say that you haven't made any in St. Louis County, is that what, is that what I heard you say?
Yes, sir.
So you do hire, though, Gateway Government Relations, you admit that, right?
Yes, sir.
Do you know if it's, if, if there, it is possible or has there ever been any discussion between you and Gateway that they would make the political contributions to a political candidate in St. Louis County?
We've never had that discussion, I've never asked them to make the donation on my behalf.
Could that be happening and you not know it?
I wouldn't be able to answer that, sir. I don't think they're that kind of people, though, I'll say that.
Okay. So you heard me rattle off the amount of money given to the Page, County Executive Page PAC earlier, is that right?
Yes.
About $30,000.
$5,000 increments over several different contracts.
About $30,000 since 2017, if I did the math right. So if, 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 do you have any explanations as to why your lobbyist, who's also lobbyist for the law firm in Alton, Illinois, do you know why this law firm would be making these kind of donations to Mr. Page?
I do not.
So you don't have any knowledge of why that would be happening?
No, sir, I never heard of the law firm before this and I don't know about the donations. No, sir. I never heard of the law firm before this, and I don't know about the donations.
Okay. Uh, how about, was there any discussion about having Mr. Scissors here today?
Uh, no, sir.
So you, you did not know that he had discussed about being in this meeting today?
Uh, I let him know. I found about the meeting on Friday and I adjusted my schedule so that I could attend. The only other person that I believe was invited was Tom Hoffman. I didn't see Earl as an invited, uh, an invited individual, so I did not ask him to attend.
Yeah, he, he was not invited to attend, but we had heard that, that he knew about the meeting and, and he thought he was going to attend. That's why I'm wondering if you had heard that before.
I had not heard that.
Okay, and are they still employed by you, Gateway Government Relations? Are they still working for you?
They are.
And do they just do work in Missouri for you?
Uh, specific to this procurement right now until we're finished with the installation process.
And then you, they move on, you drop them and move on, cause now you're an established customer of the counties, is that fair?
Probably fair to say it in that manner, yes.
How long have they been on your payroll?
Since sometime second week through the, the second procurement event. So I, I don't have that date right in front of me, but RFP number two.
So at least through, since RFP number two, they've been on board representing you or lobbying for you, is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement.
And, and do you know a, an estimate about how much your company has paid them?
I do not, sir, I'm sorry.
Is it tens of thousands of dollars? Is it, you don't have a clue? You don't have any idea?
I, I, I think tens of thousands is probably close.
Okay, so tens of thousands of dollars, and what would have been that, and I don't have the date in front of me, what, when would that, would that have started? What year?
I, I don't have the specific start date. I wasn't prepared for that today. I was looking at the, the note I received specified campaign contributions. So that's what I was verifying most of the time, that and getting rounded on the procurements.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Anderson, let me see if any of the other council, councilwoman did.
I just have one other question, because you did mention about decreasing your fees. So you're saying that if St. Louis County decides that they want to lower the, lower the fee to you, that, you're amenable to that?
Well, we lowered, we removed the credit card fee and we honored the, the rate that we put in through the RFP. So we're at that four point nine, so we reduced the rates from what was being charged by the incumbent by seventy-six point six seven percent. Plus remove the credit card fee.
Okay, and so if, if, if there's an, if there's, let's just say another complaint that, you know, we still feel that that's a little high. How do you go about changing that, or would you, or we're stuck with whatever it is you have now?
Uh, we're open to it. I think a lot of it comes down to what we look at as far as what we're providing. There's, and, and this was said before, the cost isn't the only thing that goes into a procurement for these services. We provide a, and a significant amount of technology that protects the community and the individuals that are currently incarcerated on our system. So it's, it's not just the price, right? We're, we're verifying all of the calls that are going out, aren't going to victims or witnesses, so those individuals can't be arrested. So there are other technology pieces included in this. So if the county came back at some time during the term and wanted to expand services or include more, I, I'd be open to that, Councilwoman. We, we have wanted to be a good partner, and I've spent a significant time learning about your county to make sure that we could. And, and to be frank, I think the program that we have implemented is something that all of you could be proud of. You know, tablets were brought up a few times today. Just a, a note on that, it's going to provide a one-to-one tablet ratio for every incarcerated individual in the facility to access educational programs, job location programs, addiction recovery programs, mental health support, relationship and parenting classes, all for free. So we, we did a lot to make sure that we were recognizing what this council has said was important for their returning citizens, and we have included that in what we have done for the county.
And that's to know, uh, not, not against you at all, but, uh, of course, the council is concerned that, you know, how this process happened.
I understand.
That clearly, that, that clearly does not include you in that statement, but it just seems that, you know, they wanted you, period. And they went around or however they did it to go around the council to make sure that you got the contract. So that's why, you know, we're concerned about this. We want to make sure that these things are happening and happening in the correct order. So I do appreciate the, the services that you're providing for our citizens and, 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 uh, we'll, we'll move on from there. But I, I just want to make sure that, that you understand clearly what we're talking about and what we're dealing with in terms of how these contracts are let.
Yes, ma'am, completely.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Harder?
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Anderson. A couple of other things, I'm still trying to get my head around this chain of, of the way billing and, and money is, is going down from your company. So you send, or you get a bill from the Simmons Law Firm, is that how that works?
I don't get anything. I don't know who the Simmons Law Firm is.
Okay, so they're, they're not tied to this. So you get a bill from then Gateway for.
I work with National Strategies, and I, I actually never see a bill, so it's all paid through them directly. But we work with that firm, that national firm that partnered us with Gateway locally.
Okay, so you, you get a bill from National Strategies for their services, correct?
So, someone in accounting does. When you say you, I just want to be clear.
Yeah, 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 your company, your company. So, and, and that's agree upon contract for services rendered, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and that has a dollar amount tied to that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and part of that, that offering is the services of Gateway Government Relations, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and did you need to do that, or have you done that in other marketplaces?
Uh, engaged Gateway or other consultants?
Other consultants.
Oh, yes, sir, for sure.
So is Gateway just specific to St. Louis?
Yes.
Okay, have you used them before in any other area? Okay, but you've used people like them in other marketplaces?
Yes.
Okay, and is it your understanding, they, what are they supposed to do for you?
Uh, the thing we brought them on for was to make sure we understood what the process should be as it applied to a procurement with St. Louis County. Again, it's, it's very unusual that we get an award, it goes through the process, and then the contract does not happen. So when that occurred here, we brought them on, and it was to help make sure that we did whatever we needed to do right the next time if we got the award, so we did not have that award overturned again.
So it's, is it your understanding that if someone from our procurement department had a question over about your services or about your contract, would they contact Gateway Government Relations, or would they go straight to you?
They would go to me.
Okay, and they wouldn't go back to National, uh, Services either, or Strategies?
Uh, no, they would go direct to me. If there was any questions for any procurement, it would come direct to me. We lean on them for advice and guidance on anything. Hey, we receive this, how do we answer to this?
Okay, so it's your understanding Gateway Government Relations is not as, um, a person that knows about your system in depth like you know?
No, sir.
So they're not, they're not subject matter experts?
No, sir.
Okay, and so for National Strategies to employ them, are they employing them to do what?
Uh, that they have an understanding of how the procurement process works in that given area.
Okay, but they are not communicating with our procurement department, is that true?
No, uh, we get documents, we have RFPs that we receive as part of the procurement process. So if we had a question on those, we would go to Gateway.
Okay, and would Gateway then call someone if they had a question? I mean, are they part of the, the communication link to our procurement department, or?
They never spoke to anybody in procurement, to my knowledge. I would ask them, hey, this, this is what this form looks for, how would we do this? How, what does St. Louis County look for on these forms?
Okay, and so during this process, were you the contact person for any questions? Are, are any issues, or would you contact procurement to see how the process is moving along or not?
My direct report was the primary contact for this. I, I had one that started, the first three RFPs, the individual who finished it was a different salesperson.
Okay, so you have a salesperson underneath you covering St. Louis County's account?
Correct.
Okay, and that person would be the direct, uh, connection to our procurement department?
Well, they wouldn't call procurement, once the RFP is out, we're in a cone of silence, so we don't reach out on anything like that. They would reach out to us and say, we need clarification, we need this. So it's, it's reactionary on our side. He's the person that is in charge of working on the RFP with me. If we have a pre-bid conference up there, he would attend that, um, he would attend presentations with me, so that's pretty much what he does.
And is that salesperson?
With purchasing.
Is that salesperson live here in town, or?
He does not.
Okay, um, and prior to the cone of silence, because you, you heard the discussion about that. You know, because of this contract bidding process over the years, we had to develop the cone of silence. And so prior to that, would he be normally interacting with people here in the county?
Uh, he would work, interact with mostly jail staff. We don't interact with county executives, council people, or anything like that nature. That's not what, what we do. We're, we usually focus on working with subject matter experts on our technology because of what it is.
So you would, you would say confidently, he did not have any contact with anybody other than the jail people?
I say that confidently, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Drakeus. Um, Mr. Anderson. One last question for you, actually, to, does, does Gateway Strategies, Government Relations, or National Strategies, do they get a bonus from your company for securing a contract?
No.
So if they don't do anything that works for you to get the contract, they get no additional money?
Correct.
Now you've kept them on board now for several years, is that right?
Yes.
So you were happy with their work?
But the RFPs kept coming out, so we were working through that process. By the time we were four or five RFPs in, they were familiar with what we were doing, so we, they were part of the team. At this point, we were finishing out our contract process still, as far as completing what our obligations are with the installation of the tablets. So that is why Gateway is still part of my team.
Do they get a share of the, uh, contract award?
No, sir.
So there's, there's nothing, it's a flat fee they charge you, and whatever it is they do with that fee, you don't know?
Yes, sir.
They could make political donations with it, right?
I don't think that happens, but it.
Okay. All right, have you ever secured a contract without the help of, of a lobbying firm?
Many times, most of the time.
So why in this case did you hire them to lobby for you?
Uh, just as I said, the first RFP went out, we went through the process on that. We had the award when it got to contract, it didn't make it through the county executive's office and was put back out to bid. And we were, we clearly won, and we felt we were the better choice at that point. We felt that way going in round two. So we wanted to make sure that we did not have the same issue occur. Um, as was mentioned earlier, procurement, procurements are very expensive for a vendor to go through, not only travel back and forth to the area. We have to prepare the response on pulling in a lot of different individuals, put the answer together, put together a pricing strategy, sending texts out to do the site surveys. So we spend a lot of, a lot of money and time on a procurement. We didn't want to do more than two. And so we, we brought them on in the hope that the second time through, we would be able to finish what we started the first time.
So what ex, I don't understand, what exactly did they do for you?
Uh, there are a lot of steps in the procurement process to make sure we stepped right through. So it's just not an award and then you get in a contract. We wanted to make sure whatever was needed by St. Louis County, we provided it correctly, answered everything correctly on the forms. So there was no chance of our response being overturned again.
Okay, and then for this specific meeting today, other than getting the request to attend, did you talk to Gateway or National Strategies or Earl Scissors or Sarah Martin about your testimony here today?
I did not talk to National Strategies. I did let Gateway know that I received a letter on Friday. Well, Tom Hoffman received a letter and sent it to me on Friday.
And who from Gateway did you talk to?
Earl and Sarah.
So you talked to both of them?
Yes.
And what, what was the discussion? What, what did you, you want from them? Since you're paying them, what did you ask them to give?
I, I asked, was this a normal process that occurs with procurements, procurements in St. Louis? And, and how to go through the process?
And their response?
Just go answer the questions that you're asked.
Okay, all right, any other questions, Councilman Drakeus?
Mr. Anderson, your patients today, uh, Fisher, I understand. Securus's retention of Gateway? And so what I took from your state.
Chairman Fitch.
Can you hear me now?
Thank, thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
You must go, go to sleep or something, it's hard to say. Anyway, um, thank you for your patience.
Yes, sir.
Just want to get some clarification of my understanding of the, um, reasons Securus retained Gateway.
Okay.
And my takeaway from, from what you've said, and you tell me if I'm wrong. But it sounds like the intent behind hiring Gateway was to assist Securus in complying with the rules applicable to responses to RFPs in St. Louis County.
Yes.
So they were basically trying to make sure that all the boxes were checked, um, to like, for lack of putting it another way, in terms of complying with the RFP process.
Yes.
To your knowledge, um, let me ask it this way, did you ever instruct, um, anyone at Gateway to lobby? And that is to reach out to anyone in St. Louis County government to advocate for your selection as a, uh, as the vendor of choice in this particular RFP or RFPs?
No, sir.
Okay, to your knowledge, did they ever do that?
No, sir.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Other members of the committee? Councilman Drakeus, anything further?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson. Okay, Mr. Anderson, is there anything that you wanted to bring out today that, uh, we haven't had, we did not ask you about?
No, sir, if you have anything additional, please let me know.
Um, okay, that's all we have, so you can, I appreciate you coming today, appreciate your patience and being here for so many hours. And, uh, we will certainly recontact you if we have additional questions.
Thanks, sir. I appreciate it very much.
Are there any other questions or comments from committee members?
I have none.
Councilman Drakeus.
Yes, sir, thank you.
So I would just add in here, before I ask if there's public comments, um, I would just add in here that we still have a loop we need to close here that we have not. Uh, so my recommendation will be to have a follow-up meeting to this one and, uh, address those questions that we still have, that you could hear the participants not being able to answer or not having knowledge of it. So I will develop that and let the committee know when the next meeting will be.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comments?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn in a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you again very much for being here.